I'd like to call the August 5th Council meeting to order. And if we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Congressman Allen Lowenthal, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would be honored. Please place your hand over your heart. Be happy.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, in lieu of an invocation, I would like to do a little inspiration. Basam Antikas was written by James Allen, and he was on this planet, died in 1912. He has a lot of wonderful things that I want to read for you today. He who cherishes a beautiful vision, a lofty ideal in his heart, will one day realize it. Columbus cherished the vision of another world, and he discovered it. Copernicus fostered the vision of a multiplicity of worlds and a wider universe, and he revealed it. Buddha beheld the vision of a spiritual world of stainless beauty and perfect peace, and he entered into it. Let it be. You may sit. And would you like to do roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here. And this evening, we would like to open this meeting in memory of Kenny Beach, a longtime resident of Avalon who passed just recently. Are there any announcements?
Yes, Mayor. Donna Carlos from the congressman's office asked that I announce before the congressman provides his update that for the community to be aware that there is Community Coffee tomorrow, Wednesday, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. That's at the Nature Center at Avalon Canyon, 1202 Avalon Canyon Road.
Other announcements? Any announcements from the community?
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Good evening and good evening, Congressman Lowenthal. Recently, my husband, Richard, and I submitted a letter to the CPUC, and we feel that it would be important for you to be aware of that letter, and also that there were 180 signatures on the petition that accompanied it. So I will read it for the record. It was addressed to Commissioner James Booth, who is in the Division of Water and Audits, regarding Southern California Edison's proposed revisions to the Santa Catalina Island Water Tariff Advice Letter 92W. Dear Commissioner Booth, we have been residents of Avalon on Santa Catalina Island for over 40 years. We were here during the extreme drought conditions of 1977 and subsequent droughts to this date. The current water situation on Catalina Island is considerably more serious than the droughts of the past. We are writing to you to protest Southern California Edison's proposed tariff revisions to the Rule 14.1 for Santa Catalina Island Water Rationing, Stage 2 through Stage 4. Specifically, we are asking you to deny the request for Tariff Rule 14.1, Section 88, which will actually increase the use of Catalina's potable water by allowing, and I quote, "water level in existing pools, spas, hot tubs, and decorative fountains that circulate water may be maintained to ensure continued operation of circulation equipment." The original tariff restricts the use of potable water for the filling or refilling of swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, and decorative fountains, and we firmly believe that this water usage should continue to be restricted. Furthermore, this proposed revision to the tariff allows the pools, spas, hot tubs, and decorative fountains to be maintained by adding potable water through Stage 4, when residents will be asked to reduce their water usage by 75 percent. This revision is contradictory to the goal of saving water. We suggest that all pools, spas, and hot tubs be required to have a cover to reduce evaporation, and that owners provide an alternative water source other than water provided by Southern California Edison if they insist on keeping them full of water. We propose that decorative fountains be turned off, period. All of the pools, spas, and hot tubs on Catalina Island are unnecessary for the health and well-being of humans. They are strictly for recreation and not a priority for water consumption during a water crisis. Southern California Edison representatives have stated that they are asking for the revision to this particular rule because it may be a financial hardship for the owners of these pools, spas, hot tubs, and decorative fountains. While at the same time, restaurants, hotels, businesses, and residents on the island are being asked to cut water usage by 25 percent beginning August 11, 2014. This presents a financial hardship for them as well, but they have to comply or pay the fines. It appears that pool, spa, hot tub, and decorative fountain owners' financial needs are perceived to be more important than anyone else. In Stage 3 Water Rationing, we will be asked to reduce our water usage by 50 percent, and yet, according to the proposed revision, pool, spa, hot tub, and decorative fountain owners will still be allowed to maintain their water levels. And in Stage 4, we will not be allowed to water any outside landscaping, period. Yet Southern California Edison is proposing to allow pool, spa, hot tub, and decorative fountain owners to use precious water for the maintenance of their circulation equipment. Again, we reiterate, this is irrational and does not conserve water. The complete language of the proposed revisions to the water tariff was not included in any of the water rationing information sent to the Edison customers on the island. We had to personally go to the Edison office on the island to get a copy of the complete revision. We therefore would ask you to require any future changes or proposed changes to the water tariff to be mailed in their entirety to each Edison customer so that we can have the opportunity to respond appropriately and in a timely manner to the CPUC. We have circulated the enclosed petition, which asks you, the CPUC, to deny the Edison request for the revision to Tariff Rule 14.1, Section 88. All of the enclosed 180-plus signatures are from Avalon residents, and we strongly encourage you to uphold our request and prioritize the water needs of humans over the water needs of pools, spas, hot tubs, and decorative fountains. This serious drought calls for serious and intelligent decisions, and it is our expectation that you will proceed accordingly. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
And to add to that, the city did submit a protest letter regarding that tariff and the other tariff with regards to using concrete plants for, that they could use our potable water to create concrete. So hopefully, I know they got that, and our words were rather strong. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other written communications?
No.
Or announcements? Okay. Well, let's move on to presentations.
Yes, Mayor, we have two this evening. We have an update from our congressman, Allen Lowenthal, about Washington, D.C., and his efforts there on behalf of the community. We also have a presentation from Warren Divin from the city attorney's office, where he will continue our public financing workshop.
Okay. Congressman Lowenthal, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Say "not the Speaker." Thank you, Madam Mayor, for inviting me. It's a pleasure to be back. As many of you may know, my sister taught for many years here in Avalon, and so, at the high school. And so, I'd come visit her, and I represented Avalon, and really, all of Catalina, in the state assembly, the state senate, and also now, as I'm completing my first term in the U.S. Congress. In 2011, just to kind of frame it, in 2011, rather than the state legislature drawing the boundaries of the state senate and the assembly and the congressional districts, we had voted a few years earlier to have an independent redistricting commission, and they created a new district, which really is the 47th Congressional District. And that district is, goes really from Catalina Island through Long Beach, almost all of Long Beach, a little bit of Lakewood, also Signal Hill, and then it has Western Orange County. So we're the kind of the coastal area of Long Beach out to Catalina, and then some of the inland areas in Orange County. And I was really honored to be the first representative from the newly-created 47th Congressional District. And so, I'm really honored to be here, and I just wanted to say that I'm here tonight, and that those that will be here tomorrow, I'll be at a chamber breakfast in the morning at 8:30. I'll be meeting with the folks from the island company around noon. I'm going to the Avalon Library at 2:00. Going to go to the sheriff's station also. Then I'm going to meet with the conservancy at 3:15, and then at 4:30, we just want to have a coffee for constituents, just to listen, to hear some of the concerns. Obviously, before I even get to what's going on in Washington, much of my job is to respond in Washington to the needs of my district. That's really why I'm there. I have the opportunity to work on other things. So, for example, being elected in 2012, I have the good fortune of serving on the Foreign Affairs Committee. I also serve on the Natural Resources Committee, where I serve on the Oceans and Fisheries Subcommittee because of my concerns about ocean issues, Catalina, Long Beach, 47th Congressional District. Maybe a little bit about what I've just heard and been listening. I am very concerned about how we can all work together to begin to rethink and to work with those of you here in Avalon about a new strategy for water in the future. I think that is really going to take, as I point out to everyone, we're going to need, as we go through droughts, as we go through more severe climate change, that, especially as it produces, as we see more and more global warming, we are going to have to treat water like a precious resource, like gold and diamond, and really figure out how we're going to save it, how we're going to protect ourselves, what are our new practices. And I'm committed to working with you, to working with the residents of Avalon, to figure out what role can the federal government play, what role should the state governments play, what role should the city play, what role should private sector play in ensuring that we both treasure and treat our water as a resource, but also make sure that we protect the public safety and the public well-being of our communities. And so, I think it's going to take some creative thinking. I've already begun to have discussions with folks, and I'm going to continue to do that. So I'm not here to kind of say anything more than, I've been listening, I hear, I want to see what I can do to help and participate in that. Maybe one thing I've already done is, while people say that really very little gets done in Washington, and this is an overview of what's going on, and in many ways, we have not been what is known as a very productive Congress, probably in turning out bills, one of the least productive Congresses. And I think in part, that has to do with the tremendous polarization that is throughout the nation. And Congress reflects that polarization, and it's not an easy thing to kind of work out. I am a great advocate, as your representative, of trying to work across political lines. I'm a, when I was in the state legislature, became a founding member of a bipartisan caucus. I worked on independent redistricting at the state to take it out of the hands of both political parties. I'm a member of the most bipartisan group in Congress called the No Labels Group, and I'm really working to have fair elections throughout the country. So that's one of the things I'm doing. But it's still a difficult task, and I'm not here to point fingers, but it is kind of difficult. One of the successes, though, we've had is we just passed the House of Representatives' Energy and Water Bill, which really had to do with how we're going to appropriate money for the Army Corps of Engineers on infrastructure water projects. Potentially, we want to look at that to see if there's any way in which some of that might help some of the aging infrastructure here in Avalon, but also that project that bill enabled us to do, fully fund the dredging around Catalina Landing in Long Beach. The importance of talking about that is, that allows the ability of commerce and transportation between the island and Long Beach, because we had reached a crisis point where that had not been dredged in many years, and Catalina Express was not able to get their votes in. And I think that's critically important, that the Army Corps listened to us and worked with our office and others, and the Congress, to say that that's of national significance. We cannot have the mouth of the L.A. River and the access to transportation to Catalina in such a way that the only way to get back and forth would be by helicopter. That is not acceptable, to be able to go to Long Beach especially. And so, that was, I was very glad to see that, working on that. And that funding will mean that this year, we're going to have, by the end of 2015, that will be dredged out to reach levels to maintain it for at least, almost the next decade will be done. Unfortunately, dredging, as we know, because of changes in water currents and where water has to be done periodically. And so, we're also going to be examining what, and seeing if we need to have the Army Corps also come and begin to examine what's going on here in Avalon. Not because there's a crisis there, but just because it's important that they understand that we always do dredging in all the nation's harbors, and it may be time to really look here, too. What other things are going on? I mentioned that I'm kind of working on, I'm on Natural Resources and Foreign Affairs from Washington, I'm getting a little update. We are ending a period in the nation where, I think I'm overgeneralizing, but you know, after the long involvement in both Iraq wars and in Afghanistan, the nation seems to be more war-weary and wanting to kind of begin to focus more on internal issues than in terms of being the world's police officer. We're doing that at a very time when there is tremendous instability in the world, too. So just be aware, while we're talking about bringing people home, not having to solve everybody else's problems, we are also seeing terrible treatment of people in Syria, where millions of people have been displaced by horrible, almost genocide that's taking place in the country. We're also seeing strong religious terrorist groups like ISIS engage in Iraq, in kind of a destabilization of the country. Tremendous tensions between Shiites and Sunnis that go back generations, if not generations, that are not going to be, but it's all leading to tremendous instability in that part of the world. We're seeing also that in Europe, in Eastern Europe, Mr. Putin and the Russians have kind of annexed part of Crimea, have annexed Crimea, come into another country and annexed. Can you imagine what people would do if China came and annexed Catalina and said, "It's an island, we own it." And so, you know, that, too, is causing tremendous amount of consternation throughout the world. And we're seeing in the Far East also tremendous tension between China and many of its neighbors about control of the islands in the South China Sea. I say that to say that while we're not seeing tremendous U.S. involvement at this time, it is critically important that we all understand that the world is going through tremendous changes at this moment, and we have a role sometimes to protect innocent people, and when there's the loss of tremendous amount of lives, and we're trying to balance, how do you do that while saying that our role is no longer going to be the role of policing everywhere in the world? But on the positive thing, like I said before, one of my issues has been to work with veterans. I represent also in my district the Joint Forces Training Base, which is the first responders for anybody here in Southern California, our base in Los Alamos. And it's critically important, I've become, as both a member of the Foreign Affairs Committee and also representing one of the military bases in Southern California, to know that our military deserves our gratitude and our really understanding of just how hard we place them in such difficult situations. They return home after being in highly stressful kinds of situations, and sometimes we're not able to provide them the resources that are necessary. I've been working in our office on issues around the Veterans Administration, which is the primary agency that provides services for veterans, does both healthcare on one side, and it also tries, the other side is their benefit side, to try to keep people out of hospitals, to keep people functioning in their communities. And we've been, there are problems in that system that we're working very hard to work on, and I know I've been working with residents even here in Avalon about making sure that that system works better than it does now. What else is going on? We still are struggling with how we overhaul, we have not overhauled our immigration system since the 1980s under President Reagan. That is causing what we do. I personally am a supporter, and I'll answer any questions, of a more comprehensive approach to immigration reform. I would like to see a pathway to citizenship. I would like to see families reunified. I would also like to see having border security, but within the context of having a much more up-to-date immigration system that works. We don't have that now, but the Congress is struggling with that, and we're kind of doing piecemeal approaches a little bit, and that's a difficult thing to deal with. But I'm just saying, I personally support a more comprehensive approach and a pathway to citizenship. I work on, I was an educator before I came to Congress, I was at Cal State Long Beach and teaching psychology, which makes me in a very good position to be your Congress member as a psychologist. People say to me, "Why did you go to Congress? It's so dysfunctional." I say, "I'm a psychologist. I have sought out dysfunctionality my entire life. It's like being home, being around a lot of dysfunctional people." But I also believe that much of the problems that we have in Congress, or as we have in many of our institutions, is that we don't spend enough time listening. We spend more time talking, and so I really want to spend some more time here, just listening also, and not just talking about that. So I think maybe I'll kind of stop with that and answer kind of any questions that I have, or to say, it's really an honor to serve you. I mentioned that the committees that I'm on, if you want to ask any questions about that, I want to work on infrastructure issues. I see critically the need to deal with water in a more rational way than we've done in the past. And what else can I say? Maybe I'll just stop at that. Are there people here that want to? First, I want to welcome everybody. It's very difficult to talk to people when your back is to their head. It's not exactly the best form of communication. So I'm here to say hi. Oh, yes. I also want to say, I hope to see a lot of you today, either at the coffee tomorrow, or at the chamber, or at the library. I also take a lot of time with my, I have two staff members here, my wife Debbie. Debbie is a physician. I'm very fortunate, she works for Kaiser Permanente, both here in California and also in Washington, D.C., a primary care physician. So any of my healthcare needs, I just turn over and I ask them, I don't know what to do. I have next to her Julie Tran of my office, and Donna Carlos, who really want to be, reach out, and people in Avalon and all of Catalina get to know who they are to respond. We spend a lot of time trying to communicate to our residents. We feel like having an open dialogue is the most important thing. And so, I hope that you, many of you who have Internet, will go to my website, which is wwwlowenthal.house.gov. Will follow me on Facebook, will follow me on Twitter. Will also, we have a weekly publication that we send out throughout our district called the 47th Flyer. We hope that people will follow that and communicate back and forth to us. We try to do as much of that as we can. I think that this is a great country. There is no other place on earth like this country. We have lots of changes that we're kind of going through. We've had some major struggles, you know, with our recession. It's great to come out here and see, even though, you know, we talked about water issues, all the people that are here in Avalon, the tourists, I think that's wonderful, that maybe it's a good sign that we're kind of moving forward in that way. I think that's wonderful. I want to be one of those tourists, so when I leave here, I can purchase things tonight. And I'm just really pleased, even though there are difficulties that we're going through, I think it's a wonderful honor to represent people and to be a representative, and I'm just thrilled to be here and to say, this is your, anytime you come to Washington, we'll have a lot of personal attention, and this is your government, and I just really want to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Easy question. It's nice to see you. Well, thank you, Mayor. It's the first of many times that I hope to see you and the council here in the future and to work on projects together.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Congressman.
Enjoy the rest of your vacation. Sounds so relaxable.
Sounds so relaxable.
You've lost her again.
Dude.
That's horrible.
How's that over there?
We're not doing it anymore anytime soon.
I'm sunning myself.
Bring your suntan lotion.
Get some additional blinds up top. What do you think?
Okay, and our second presentation.
Yes, Mayor, the second presentation this evening is from Warren Diven of the City Attorney's Office. This is the second part of our Public Finance Workshop. If you would please allow us just a moment so that we could queue up the PowerPoint. You all should have the paper copy of the deck with you. And we are going to be starting on, I think it's the 18th or 19th slide. It says Part Two, Public Finance Workshop, Part Two.
I say the pages aren't numbered.
Warren, thank you for such a beautiful colored copy. We appreciate that. Beautiful colored copy.
Thank you.
Just give us a moment, we'll get this up and running.
I do apologize for the lack of numbering. I tried to do that this morning, and I couldn't get the numbers to go on. I don't know why.
So we'll just hold it over till next time.
All right. Wait a second. So this is, this is the second part of the public financing discussion that we started a month or so ago. And just briefly, what I wanted to, what I want to cover this evening is a very short recap of Part One to just remind us of what we talked about before. And then focus on the financing team and the roles and responsibilities of the members of the financing team, and particularly the roles and responsibilities of the city in general and the city council in particular in doing a financing. And then we'll talk briefly about the methods of sale of bonds, if that's one of the options that the city council wants to look at. And then we have added steps and timing for doing a revenue bond measure, if that's something you should choose to do. It'll tell you a little bit about what goes on, what goes into putting a bond issue together from step A to step Z. And then finally, if time permits, we'll have final questions, discussion, and follow-up. And I actually have two glasses of water here tonight. I hope that I won't need them, and we won't be here that long, but to avoid that. So, okay, recap. The last time we were together, we talked a little bit about the methods of paying for public improvements. Pretty straightforward, pay-as-you-go, setting aside some of your tax revenue or some of your, for example, your enterprise revenue, your sewer revenue, to pay for improvements as you aggregate enough revenue to do that. Of course, you have to have sufficient revenues, either tax or sewer revenues, for example, to be able to take some of it and set it aside and not have to use all of it on operations and maintenance. But that's one of the ways that you can do pay-as-you-go. And I think when we discussed this the last time, Avalon, the urgency of some of your public improvement needs may really not allow you to pay-as-you-go for any of the big-ticket items. Another funding mechanism we talked about were grants. We've talked earlier this evening about the water bond and whether or not it might be possible to get, I don't know if at the state level we can get an earmark, but get some of the grant money set aside for Avalon to help finance your water needs. And then there were also additional grants discussed in your 10-year financial plan that we identified last time. Indebtedness is the third form of paying for public improvements, and that's either through issuing bonds, doing a municipal bond financing, or perhaps borrowing money from the state of California through the State Revolving Fund program. And the State Revolving Fund does provide some of the least expensive form of, forms of financing that the city could use for either its wastewater or water projects. And finally, there's probably going to be a combination of those, whether, hopefully it would be grants and money that you don't have to repay. But then you have to backfill that because that on itself isn't enough, and so you might want to do a form of financing for that. We talked about the most likely forms of financing that you might consider using, an assessment district, which is a form of land-secured financing, where the city council would establish an assessment district around a geographic area, probably the jurisdictional boundaries of the city if you were doing a large-scale project. And you would levy assessments against the property owners within the assessment district who receive a special benefit from the improvements that are being financed. One of the limitations on assessment districts is that if there are general benefits, for example, if you wanted to finance a park, a lot of the benefits from a park are benefits to the general public or benefits to the tourists who come over from the mainland. Well, you would, there wouldn't be very much in terms of special benefit that you could assess to property owners. And so you wouldn't be able to include that in a financing for an assessment district for parks, by way of example. We talked about special tax bonds or community facilities districts, another form of land-secured financing where the city would establish a geographic boundary, again, perhaps the entire boundaries of the city. And within that, the city council would propose to levy a special tax, which does not have to be based on benefit, against the properties, properties within the city in order to pay debt service on bonds that might be issued. The issue, however, with the community facilities district is that you have to go through both a protest hearing and then an election. And the election, in all likelihood, would be a registered voter election, and that would require a two-thirds vote to get voter approval for that. General obligation bonds are probably one of the most efficient forms of financing, the lowest interest rates, because they're secured by an unlimited tax levy on properties within the city. But again, that requires the two-thirds vote of the property, of the registered voters within the city in order to get an authorization to issue general obligation bonds. And then finally, revenue bonds. Revenue bonds would be bonds that would be secured by, for example, you're doing a sewer project and, or wastewater reclamation plant, you're upgrading your plant. You would issue revenue bonds that would be secured by the revenues that are collected as part of the property owner's service charges and use those to repay those bonds. So before we move on from the recap, any questions about what we did last time that we brought back? And if I'm going to quickly, please have me slow down. Next, we want to talk a little bit about the financing team, and there are a lot of players that are listed here. Not all of these players will be involved in every bond issue that the city might want to consider, but clearly, the city of Avalon, as the issuer, will always be the major player in any type of financing that's put together. Then we'll talk about Bond Council, Disclosure Council, the rest of the folks on this list as we go along, and tell you a little bit about what their roles are and how they can help the city in putting together and bringing off a financing. So, the issuer, that's the city of Avalon. The city and the city council have responsibilities both prior to the time that the financing closes, a finance closing is like a home closing, when you're taking out a mortgage on a house, when you put all the documents together and you finally get the deed to your house. Well, it's the same thing with a, with a public financing. There's a closing at the end. One of the first roles of the city council and the city staff would be the selection of the other members of the financing team. And we would generally recommend, in putting together a financing team, that you look at the financial advisor, and we'll tell you a little bit about that person's role. And Bond Council is two of the first people that are brought in, because they can help you quite a bit in getting recommendations on who might fill the other spots on the financing team and the best ways to add those players to the team. City council is going to have ultimate control and responsibility for the overall financing plan. You're going to upgrade your sewer treatment plant. You want to use sewer revenues to do that. And then you're going to have ultimate control over the adequacy of the disclosure documents. When you issue bonds and you issue them to the municipal marketplace, moms and pops who buy bonds for their retirement, or institutional investors who buy them for their insurance portfolios, or whoever is involved, the city is required to provide disclosure to prospective bondholders. I don't know if any of you have seen what's known as an official statement, but that's the way bonds are sold. And it's a document that describes the financing. It describes the city. It describes the revenues that are going to be pledged to repay the financing. And it also talks about any warts that might exist. If the city's had, had a problem, if the revenues have dropped off over time, or if there are other conditions that might affect the city's ability to repay the loan, under the federal securities laws, the city's required to provide anything that a prospective purchaser of that type of investment would think was relevant and material to them making a decision to do that. And that responsibility rests with the city. Now, that doesn't mean that you don't have adequate legal counsel and other professional consultants to help you with that, but at the end of the day, it is, it is the city's responsibility for that. City council will be responsible for the approval of the financing documents that will establish the terms and conditions of the particular type of financing and the financing parameters. What's the maximum amount of debt that you want to incur? What's the maximum interest rate you want to pay for this? Now, a lot of that will be set by market conditions, but there certainly will be some interest rate that you're not going to want to go over that will be outside your financial wherewithal to repay. And what's the length of the financing you want to get involved in? Your financial advisor will help you to answer a lot of these questions, but at the end of the day, it will be a decision that the city council will have to make. And then the city council will also be responsible for the approval of the disclosure documents, as I mentioned earlier. Once the financing is completed, once your financing team has come to you with the financing documents and said, "We're now ready to go into the market," and you've approved those documents, the disclosure document has been printed and disseminated to prospective purchasers, then the transaction will be closed. But that's not the end of the city's responsibilities. You have post-closing responsibilities. You have an obligation to comply with the covenants that you enter into with your investors. The covenants will be incorporated into the legal documents that are part of the transaction. But for example, in the situation where we're using, doing revenue bonds, you will have to agree to budget and allocate revenues each year to pay the scheduled debt service on the bonds. You'll have to ensure the maintenance of the revenue coverage. When you do a water financing and you pledge, you generally pledge net revenues, which means after your operation and maintenance expenses are paid, you need to have a certain amount of net revenues which will be available to pay debt service on those bonds. And the industry will normally require that you have perhaps 110% or even 120% of net revenues. So if your, if your annual debt service payment is $100,000, you will need to show each year that you have net revenues of $120,000. And the idea there is that if you have a problem in a future year, you've got some cushion there in your revenues that will still enable you to pay the scheduled debt service for those types of bonds.
If I could just go to a specific example that Warren and I had in Lake Arrowhead about two years ago, their bond covenants required 110% covenant, and our revenues were actually running low because the council had not raised rates. And so in order to keep the bond covenants, they were forced by the bond documents to raise the rates. And so that's one of the things that, having sold the bonds and having established the rates, you have a responsibility during the duration of those bonds to make certain that the revenue was sufficient. And if not, then it's the council's obligation to raise the rates, which is what happened in Lake Arrow.
Right. The city also has responsibility for complying with federal tax law and regulations to ensure the tax-exempt status of the interest on the bonds. When we issue municipal bonds and we're using them to fund public improvements, generally you're going to want to issue those bonds as tax-exempt bonds, because they will bear a much lower interest rate than if the, if the interest was taxable. But the federal government requires you to comply with certain post issuance regulations. And that means that you use the proceeds only for the purpose for which the bonds were issued. So you use the proceeds to upgrade your sewer treatment plant and not to make additions to each of the homes of the city council members. Use it for a private purpose, by way of example. And, you know, the Internal Revenue Service does have an audit program for public financing, just like they do for our own income tax payments. And so it's, it's not unheard of for a city to get a random audit from the IRS. So your staff and your consultants will provide professional assistance to make sure that those requirements are complied with, but city council will have the oversight for all of that. And then finally, you are required to comply with federal securities law to provide continuing disclosure on your financing. So in addition to this official statement that is put together when the bonds are first sold, the city has to agree to provide annual updates to the municipal bond market on how you're doing. How are our revenues doing, providing a copy of your audited financial statement on an annual basis, so the municipal bond market, those people who might want to buy your bonds from someone else in the secondary market, knows just how well those bonds or how poorly those bonds are functioning. And again, that's another responsibility of the city. So one of the consultants that will help you through the process is Bond Council. It's an attorney or a firm of attorneys who you would retain to advise and assist you and the other members of the financing team in determining and implementing the finance. Bond Council will advise the city regarding the legal ramification of the alternative financing mechanism. What are the pros and cons of selecting a different mechanism? He'll also advise, he or she will also advise you on the post issuance obligations of the city to comply with the federal tax laws and regulations. And the Bond Council is the scribe for the financing. He'll draft, or she will draft all of the documents, ordinances, other documents that are included in the, transactional documents that are included in the financing. And then at the end of the day, oh, and Bond Council will also prepare all of the closing documents. You know, when you buy a house, that big stack of documents that you have to go through at the end? Well, in a public financing, Bond Council puts together that big stack of documents that everybody has to sign. And at the end, the Bond Council will provide a legal opinion to you, saying that the financing that you have entered into is legal and valid and binding on you, and you've done everything Another, we've got, have lots of attorneys in these deals, unfortunately, but that's the way the law has evolved since I've gotten in this business.
Can we, can we wrap those costs into the price of the bond?
Yes, absolutely. All of the, all, the costs of all of the consultants that I'm talking about will be included in the financing. They're called generically costs of issuance, and so you can finance those, absolutely. Disclosure Council is the next attorney that you, as a city, might retain. We talked about your responsibilities pertaining to disclosure. Well, Disclosure Council is a separate law firm, or it could be the same firm as Bond Council, who would be retained by the city to advise the city on its disclosure requirements. And this attorney, or firm of attorneys, would actually prepare the official statement that we've talked about. He would prepare the continuing disclosure agreement that we referred to, and then also what's known as the bond purchase agreement. That would be the agreement between the city and whoever it is who's buying the bonds directly from you. And this attorney would also render an opinion to the city regarding the adequacy of the disclosure that you give. So there are some, some professionals who are helping you, who are providing opinions to give you comfort that you've done everything right in putting this together. Next is the financial advisor. Again, another consultant who would be retained by the city. So the first three consultants, they're your consultants. They are responsible to you for the financing. The financial advisor would assist the, you in formulating and executing the financing methods, review the feasibility of the improvements to be financed, assess the available sources of revenue, determine how much revenue you have, do we need to have, do we need to increase any rates, do we need to increase any taxes? And then recommend a financing structure, together with the Bond Council and the Disclosure Council. And then the financial advisor would also recommend and implement the method of sale, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. But how are you going to sell the bonds? Are you going to sell them on the open market? Are you going to sell them to a private investor? Will they be through, will the sale of the bonds be bid to the lowest bidder? Will they be negotiated? So we'll talk about that a little bit more.
eBay doesn't work?
I'm sorry.
Maybe.
It might, it might work.
So have, have to have a little levity in this conversation.
Absolutely, oh yeah. The next member of the team is what's known as the underwriter, or the placement agent, or the purchaser. Now, the, the firm that is the underwriter can, may also be the placement agent, but generally not the, not a private purchaser. But the underwriter purchases the bonds from the city with the intent to resell the bonds to investors. So we do a bond issue, we sell the bonds to Merrill Lynch, who is our underwriter. What Merrill Lynch is going to do is they're going to turn around and resell the bonds either to institutional investors or to retail investors, to folks saving for the retirement. The, in a negotiated sale, the underwriter may perform many of the same functions the financial advisor would perform. And in many cases, a city may have a longstanding relationship with an underwriter that leads them to feel comfortable enough to say, "We don't really need a financial advisor. We have an underwriter that we've worked with for a long time and we have a lot of trust with, and they'll provide a lot of the same information that a financial advisor will provide." In a competitive sale, the underwriter is going to submit a bid to purchase the bonds. And then they're not responsible for, for preparing or looking over the official statement, but they have to look at it to make sure it's legally adequate in their minds. And then they'll purchase the bonds pursuant to the bid that they've submitted to the city if it's a loss bid. A placement agent acts as an agent for the city in selling the bonds to a private investor. Banks have gotten interested in purchasing bonds from cities, and you can sometimes get very competitive rates from, from banks. And so an underwriter can work as a placement agent to line you up with a bank that might be interested in purchasing bonds issued by the city of Avalon, for example. You can save money by doing a private placement like that. You don't have to have a disclosure document. You're selling it to a sophisticated investor who takes responsibility for doing their own due diligence, so you do save some costs of issuance in that respect. And you may get them at a cheaper rate. Next is underwriters' counsel, the final attorney who's involved in this. And the underwriters' counsel will represent the underwriter in a transaction where you're going to sell the bonds to an underwriter. He'll review the documents that were prepared by bond counsel and, on behalf of the underwriter, and provide input on those. He'll conduct due diligence and may prepare the official statement on behalf of the underwriter if you don't have disclosure counsel. And the one thing that cannot happen is that, under state law, the underwriter and bond counsel cannot be the same firms. There's a definite conflict there, and there's a statute that says you can't do that. So the other, other financing team members you may have, you generally always will have a trustee, a fiscal agent, or a paying agent. And this is a bank, Cyan's First National Bank, Wells Fargo, Union Bank, all are work as trustees. They have a corporate trust department, and they will fulfill this responsibility. Now, what they will do is they will administer the bonds on your behalf. So interest is paid twice a year. They will let you know 30 days before your interest payment is due, hey, you need to send us $50,000 on the first day of November, and then they will pay the, the money to the bondholders. Same thing when the principal becomes due. If a bondholder wants to sell their bond, the trustee will take care of the sale, transfer of title from one bondholder to another, and they form a number of other administrative functions like that. Now, a trustee is the highest form of financial, of this type of, this participant. If you have a trustee and the city goes into default on the payment of the bonds, or you violate a covenant, the trustee may actually have to bring an action against the city to enforce your covenant on behalf of the bondholders. So that's something you need to keep in mind. Now, for revenue bonds, you're always going to have a trustee. For land secured bonds, you may have a fiscal agent, which doesn't have quite as high of responsibility as a trustee. Credit rating agencies. In order to get better interest rates on your bonds, your financial advisor may recommend to you that you apply for a rate, credit rating from Standard and Poor's, Moody's, or Fitch, the three national credit rating services. And if you can get your bonds rated, you can get lower interest rates than if they were unrated. So that credit rating agency may be a participant in a financing you do. The first one that you do, maybe not because you don't have a track record in the industry, but your financial advisor and the underwriter can assist you in making that determination. Bond insurer. If you, if your credit is good enough to be investment grade, there are insurers out there who will be willing to insure the payment of the principal interest on your bonds. And the advantage that that gives you is if your bond is rated A, by way of example, which is, which is a good rating, but the bond insurer has a rate of double A or triple A, I don't think there are any triple A bond insurers, but if there were, you would actually get on your bonds a rating equal to that of the bond insurer. So you can get much better interest rates in that ca, in the case where you can qualify for bond insurance. Next is the dissemination agent. Dissemination agent is a firm that may help you in doing your disclosure. They will help prepare the annual disclosures. They will file it with the appropriate federal agency on an annual basis. And if you don't give them the information in a timely way, they will remind you of it, which is really important. And then finally, there's a consultant, a rebate consultant. Hasn't been a very important consultant recently because interest rates have been so low, but in the, in the late eighties, when interest rates were high, you had a risk when you invested the proceeds of your bonds that you would earn more interest on the investment of the bonds than you would be paying on the bonds. And that difference, the difference between what you're paying and what you're earning is called arbitrage, and the federal government prohibits you from collecting arbitrage. And so the federal government requires you every five years to calculate whether you have an obligation to pay them any rebate, and this, this consultant helps you to do that. So, now before we move on, any questions about any of the participants? Okay. Methods of sale, we've talked a little bit about this already. There's a competitive sale, there are two forms of competitive sale. One where your financial advisor will actually solicit bids, similar to what you would do when you're doing a construction project. And it used to be that the bids were sealed bids. Now they're all done electronically, and it's really a fascinating process to see the bids come in. But the underwriters would bid the interest rate and the other financial parameters of the issue, and then the, the underwriter who provides the lowest cost to you would be awarded the sale of the bonds. Another way to do it would be through soliciting proposals. Your, your financial advisor would ask a select number of underwriters to provide a proposal, and then the proposal normally wouldn't have the final interest rates, but it would have some range of interest rates and other financing parameters. The advantage to that is that you get the underwriter on board earlier in the process, and if you, if you have a difficult financing, it's better to have the underwriter fully engaged early on to help you get through the process. And then there's a negotiated sale. Again, the situation where you have a, a relationship with an underwriter and you're comfortable selling the bonds to that underwriter, you would enter into a bond purchase agreement with that underwriter pursuant to which the underwriter would agree to buy the bonds for a not-to-exceed interest rate, for a not-to-exceed term, and, and you would work it that way. And then there's a private placement that we've talked about earlier, where you may be selling the bonds to a bank or another private investor. Okay. Steps in timing for a revenue bond issue. There are a lot of steps here. Some of them can be done concurrently, but some of them have to be done sequentially. At the bottom of the next page, you'll see that the amount of time from, from day one, day one, city council said, "We want to upgrade our, our sewer treatment plant until it's completed." It's about an 18 to 24 month period, depending on some of the requirements that go in here. So, first step would be to appoint bond counsel and financial advisors, we talked about before, to get some of your consultants on board who can help you determining the facilities to be financed, the cost estimate, and, and those types of things. Then determining the facilities to be financed and the cost estimate for the construction or, and financing. That would really be up to your city staff and any consultants that you might have, engineering or design consultants that you may have. If, when you get those cost estimates, you take a look at your, we're doing, we're upgrading the sewer treatment plant, you take a look at your revenues and what your net revenues are, and you discover that you're going to have to increase your sewer fees in order to generate enough money to do this financing. So then you're going to need to look at appointing a rate consultant to prepare a rate study to authorize rate increases if necessary, so that you get, you can show investors that you can generate sufficient revenues to, to pay the debt service and have the coverage that, that would be required. The appointment of the rate consultant, depending on how you do it, would could take from two to four months. If you have a rate consultant you used in the past, you can certainly reappoint that rate consultant. That would take less time. If you go through an RFP process, it may take longer for you to do that. Then the consultant would undertake the rate study, and the prop, and you would undertake the proposition to a team process to increase the rates. All of that could take as much as, as a year. Then there's environmental review and project entitlements that might be required. If we, you're just upgrading your existing plant, you may be able to get away with a mitigated negative declaration. If you're making, if you're increasing the capacity, if you're putting in new lines somewhere else, you may have to do an environmental impact report and, and go through that entire process. Determining the method of sale, this is one of the tasks that you can do along with everything else. Could take as much as a month. Selecting additional team members, again, a task that can be done while you're going through the rest of this process. Financing team establishes the structure of the bonds and the financing schedule. You know, once you get your financing team on board, they want to meet with the city manager and, and then bring it, a proposal to the city council and say, "Here's what we're looking at," and get your sign off on that.
Warren, while we're on this slide, could we, I mean, I think there might be even a .5 step that we might want to touch on, and perhaps we could ask Chris to come up to talk about this, but in order to be bond eligible, I think you also have to have some of your financial statements and audits completed, right? And you, and you could, maybe you could talk about that briefly, then Chris could kind of provide the council with where we are so that they understand, because that's really, before we even get to all this, we have to get our own house in order first, right?
That's right. I mean, certainly before you, before you distribute, you finalize your official statement and you distribute it, you have to have your financial house in order. That's right. In order for your bonds to be marketable, you're going to have to have your, your audits current, and so.
And how, and so, sorry, just to be painful on this one. What, what does that mean? Does that mean you're completely caught up? Does that mean that you're a year behind? What does that mean?
Well, it means that in, in the fiscal year, if we were going to do a financing now, you would want to have your 13, 14, no, your 12, 13 audit done, and approved.
And when you say done and approved, I think you're saying you, the financial statements are completed, and the, the third-party auditors come in and signed off and said, "Yes, we agree with what you've submitted here," correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, I mean, this, the reason why I bring this up is I, we've made a lot of headway in this area yet, but we're, we're not quite there yet. So Warren, if you don't mind, Chris is here with us. Maybe Chris could just kind of let you guys know where we do stand so that you can kind of have this in your head. It's, it's a long process, but we're even not quite there to being eligible to start the process soon, but not quite yet. So Chris?
Good evening. Chris Voizik, interim finance director. That's correct. As Warren spoke to, there is a covenant that we meet current with our financial statements. I have to report that the fiscal year 12, 13 audit, for the most part, is almost done with and completed. Just before this meeting, I received a phone call from our auditors, and they did say that they could very well be, be able to position to issue within the next week. So we could actually be able to issue the 12, 13 financial statements within the next week. So that would be a great thing for us. That would bring us into compliance with what Warren was speaking to.
Right. And then if we started on that project when the 12, 13 is done, if we were, by way of example, we were in a position where we wanted to sell bonds this coming December, now that doesn't work with the schedule, but you wouldn't have to have your financial audit for 13, 14 completed, but you would have to have unaudited financial statements that you could provide to the underwriter, to any bond insurer or rating agency that was going to be looking at your finances. And you'd want to be able to complete that early in the 2015 calendar year.
Do you want to speak to that, Chris?
I do. And that's something we're also working on as well. The last piece of financial information received was the mid-year update, so we have made a lot of progress since then, which was the July to December period. I believe that was the last set of numbers you were able to look at. So we have made significant progress in recording activity, getting things caught up, and reclassing them into the right buckets, if you will. And our goal is to be able to say by the end of this month is to be able to produce financial statements for fiscal year 13, 14 that you can take a look at. Now, again, they'll be unaudited, but I feel we'll be in a position where we can actually present information to you. Also with that, we have to supply you with treasurer's reports on where we stand each quarter cash-wise, and that's something that we have to file with you as well, so we're going to be catching those up too. So with what Warren's speaking to, you know, all the other cities right now are compete, are, are going out and having their audits done. Typically, cities, and I, I'm, I just came out of, you know, working in, for several accounting firms and doing audits of cities and counties and districts up and down the state, but essentially between now and December is when all the cities go out to have their audits done, a fiscal year 13, 14. So we're now competing with all the other cities. We're caught up, if you will, we're, once we issue the 12, 13 financial statements, we'll be caught up, if you will, with all our, our other peer cities. And then we just have to then schedule the 13, 14 audit, which is something that we're talking about internally.
Thank you, Chris. I mean, this is a huge deal. It's been a long time coming, and just, we're really proud of the progress we've made. This is a lot of effort, a lot of things happening in the last few months, so I just want to make sure that you're aware and knew how it dovetailed into this because it's very linked and important.
Yes, thank you.
And I would add that on our call with representatives from Washington last week, they were very interested in those statements in terms of being eligible for certain federal programs. We need to have the audited statements ready before the federal government would add, would even look at certain programs.
Right, so you're not only not eligible for a bond, you're also not eligible for a grant potentially.
Yeah, and, and you're not eligible to participate in the state revolving fund loan program either. The state water resources control board several years ago added a The State Water Resources Control Board several years ago added a financial section to their review team, and so they'll be taking a look at your financial statements and determining whether or not you'd be eligible for that type of financing too. So it is critically important, if you want to go to the markets and you want to promise to repay someone some money, they're going to, they're going to want to make sure you have that information. It's just like having your income taxes done when you want to do a home mortgage, so that the lender can take a look at all of that. Okay. So now we're up to the preparation of the bond documents. These are the legal documents, resolutions that I talked to about, you about. Takes about three months, but again, this can be done in conjunction with a lot of other things. If you're doing a rate study and you're doing environmental review, a lot of these steps can be done concurrently rather than seriatum. Prepare the disclosure documents, the official statement. The rating presentation, you really can't do until you have all of these other documents complete. So you have your bond documents done, you prepared your draft official statement, then you would submit that to the rating agencies and to the bond insurers at that time. If you're getting a rating or if you're getting bond insurance, you would want to have a commitment for that rating or the bond insurance before you come, before the staff and your financing team come to you and say, "All right, we're ready for you to approve this financing." So that would be done before the next step, which is when the city council authorizes the issuance of the bonds. You would get a report from your financial advisor indicating that you got a rating of X and you did or did not get bond insurance. And a lot of times, bond insurance, even though you may qualify for it, may not be cost-effective for you. And you would get a report that although you've applied for it, the interest rates on the bond insurance or the premiums on the bond insurance make it uneconomical for you to purchase it. So once you approve the issuance of the bonds, then the preliminary official statement that you, that's been prepared for you will be posted. It used to be that books were printed out and sent out to prospective investors. Now it's posted online, and the cost of that has gone from about $15,000 down to about $2,500. So electronics does save us in some ways. After the official statement has been out in the market for approximately a week, there's a pricing date where your financial advisor, your director of finance, your city manager, and the underwriter would get together, and they would determine where the market is, and the underwriter would indicate that they would be willing to purchase the bonds for a given interest rate or series of interest rates. Now, that interest rate would have to be less, equal to or less than the interest rate parameter that you would approve in authorizing the issuance of the bonds, so that you are setting a ceiling on the interest rate that you would be willing to pay, and you're also setting a ceiling on the compensation for the underwriter and for the term of the bonds when you approve the financing. Once the bonds are priced, the final official statement is put together. The preliminary official statement obviously didn't, you didn't know what the interest rates were going to be, so you couldn't tell investors what the interest rates would be. You plug those into the official statement, and that's posted as a final official statement. And then a couple weeks, bond council prepares the stack of closing documents for a week or two. Those are circulated and reviewed by the full team and signed by the appropriate city officials and other officials, and then you have a closing. And when all of these steps related to the issuance of the bonds are going on, they're reviewed by the entire financing team, by your director of finance, your city manager, your city attorney, your bond counsel, disclosure counsel, your financial advisor, and the underwriter. So there are a lot of eyes on those documents to make sure that they're accurate and complete. And then you have the bond closing, and then you're ready to commence the project. And as I mentioned before, this is maybe an 18, 18 months to two-year time period, again, depending on whether you need a rate increase and the level of environmental review that you need. If you don't need a rate increase, you could probably do it six to 10 months sooner, so.
I mean, does it ever happen where you don't sell them, the bonds?
It's very rare that you get that far. I mean, something extraordinary would have to, and totally unexpected would have to happen for you.
Nobody to buy them.
Because normally if, you know, if you're looking at a particular type of financing and your financial books are in order, and your financial advisor and your bond counsel and perhaps even if you're underwriter, you're that far along, have had an opportunity to review the books, they would have a professional duty to tell you, "We just don't think we can market these bonds." Now, there are also forces outside the city's control that affect whether you can do a financing or not. The municipal bond market has, is subject to the whims of the general economic conditions, and so there are situations. In October of 2008, when we were really in the recession, you couldn't sell a municipal bond in the United States. Now, that is really, really rare. But there are other occasions where interest rates will go up so high that it doesn't make economic sense for you to go into the municipal bond market unless you absolutely have to. And so you may hold off for a while in doing it.
First redevelopment bonds are bought by the city. Buy our own bonds?
Yeah.
They had enough reserves to.
Yeah, you can do that in certain cases.
Before we go to other questions, Warren, we've talked about the city council as, you know, the entity. These would be for city bonds. Now, obviously, if there were a JPA or a community services district, then that would, that would take place of the city council. And so if it's an island-wide, for instance, JPA or a community services district, then you're not going to have the control that you would, obviously, over those issuances. And thinking in particular, if you want to take over, you know, the water service, for instance, that's, you know, the reservoirs outside the city limits. So you'd have to have a broader CSD or a water company, and again, the same structure would follow, but you would not be the issuer. The government entity or the JPA that took over or succeeded would be the issuer and would have those responsibilities. That's.
Yeah, that's right. Now Scott would try to ensure that the governing body of that JPA or that CSD had a majority of council members from the city on it, but who knows?
But that slows the process down, because establishing a JPA and all that. You're talking another six months to a year just to establish that.
Well, that, yes. And then there's, and then the other issue is, if you form a new entity, there's no financial statements. I mean, there's, it's going to be difficult right away to go into the market, because what financial record do you have? And then you're going to have to establish the rate structure. And you're starting, there, you're starting from scratch, really. And so it's, it adds a level, this timeline assumes that, you know, we've already got the government entities set, and you're not adding an additional wrinkle of forming a new entity.
This is for sewer and salt.
This would be for sewer and salt.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, with water, unless, you know, you could, the city could do a water issue. Well, no, you couldn't, because you don't have a water system. So you've got to have the, either the cooperation of Edison or you've got to have an entity that is willing and able to take over the water system before you can finance that, so.
SBAFTA sounds like a full employment act for attorneys.
It wasn't in 2008, believe me. Final questions, discussion by the council? Anything you'd like us to follow up on?
Once again, we're in the wrong business. How old are we, starting over? Wow. Things are complicated. Glad you know how to decipher it all.
You know, they can be, but remember, when you're going through this process, as I've said a couple times, you're not doing it alone. You've got, you've got your internal staff and professional consultants who are responsible for you to make sure you're doing the right thing and giving you the guidance you need to make the proper decisions, so.
Sure. Excellent. All right. Questions from the audience?
They're walking.
Okay.
Thanks, Warren.
Thanks, Warren.
Thank you, Warren.
You bet.
Do we have time to just take a little break?
It's your meeting.
Okay. There you go, Eli.
Oh, good. You better.
And oral communications? Is there anybody from the audience who would like to speak on, speak in your mic, Mary? Anybody from the audience like to speak?
Good evening. Mayor Marshall, members of the council, city staff, and Bill Delane, region manager, local public affairs for Southern California Edison Company. Just wanted to share with you a very, very brief update on our activities here in the city over the past week or so. The council chambers has very prominently displayed the most recent and latest in our co-branded communication, both to businesses and residents in Avalon and to visitors to the island as well. At your seats are examples of table tents that will be distributed this week to restaurants. We have some materials for hotels and the like. The card is made especially for the harbor master to hand to visitors to the island who sail in, so they have that awareness as well. So real proud of how these look and the collaboration between the city and the chamber to come up with the messaging and the design, so real, real proud of that. I hope you are as well. We hope it'll be effective. July 22, Southern California Edison hosted, well, held two community meetings to present some facts around stage two and what customers need to know. Want to thank upfront the city for helping get that word out, and of course, the public who participated. One of the things we did was prepare a video of the presentation in the meeting that's been provided to the city for broadcast on public access TV. So the more people we reach, I think we all agree, the better. Just a final comment, I do want to acknowledge the city and members of the public who took the time to participate. The regulatory process is meant to be very open and transparent and depends on input and participation from our customers and the communities that we serve. So thank you very much. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. Thank you very much.
Did you fix? Go ahead, Eli. I just want to fix the drippy faucet that's on the card here.
Bill, I just, I got a lot of complaints on that meeting. I know we asked you guys to videotape it, and you guys did, and we just recently got the DVD back, correct? And that was only for one meeting, the morning meeting or the afternoon meeting? Was there a reason for that?
Well, it was the same presentation. So, you know, this is the evening presentation. One of the things we incorporated into that were the questions that were presented to us in the morning, so that's all, should be all included in this. So, you know, this is really about, you know, stage two and getting that word out. This is just one way to do that. I expect there will be more questions as, you know, we passed August 11 implementation date. That's why we're here, is to respond to those questions from individuals, businesses, certainly city council.
And so one of my questions was, then, I had a lot of people asking me about the question and answer period. There was a lot of questions that weren't answered. They had a question and answer period, and they only took a few, and it was a stack of them, and then the meeting was cut short. Also, they were very upset about that. So there was a lot of things that went on to me that the people weren't real happy with. If there was any way that we could do another meeting, if we could help by doing it in the chamber and doing a live thing again and doing it, I think that would be beneficial to all the people that didn't get their questions answered. And there was quite a few people that came to me after that meeting. So the other question is, I don't understand why we couldn't show both segments of the meeting, the 10 o'clock meeting and your 6 o'clock meeting on public TV. Is there a reason for that?
Well, just to the interest of time, like I say, the whole purpose of what we did was to provide a presentation and an opportunity for dialogue.
Bill, I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Certainly.
Thanks.
To provide, to make a presentation to our customers about stage two and the critical dates and what to expect coming up. And so that's what the video and the general questions we hope provides. But I can tell you, we're committed to continue that communication and work with, certainly with our customers and members of the community.
So would it be possible to get another meeting within the next two weeks about the same thing with the people here and done properly? And I'd even sure like to see, surely like to see the first meeting also put on public TV too. Not everybody was able to attend the meeting, but there was a lot of unanswered questions from everybody, and if we could direct from the city to you guys to do that, that would surely help.
Noted. Yeah. Those questions that we have that we didn't maybe get to, I think we can find a venue to get those answered and make it very public.
So that venue would be hopefully in the city council meeting? Or in the chamber, maybe? I think that would be easier for everybody to attend and be here, and easier to record. I'd really like to see, if possible, us to do that.
Sure. City would be happy to host any meeting, so whatever works, of course, we'd make the facility available.
And I would like to see it as soon as possible. And if all possible, if we can get that other DVD and show it on public TV also, the first half of the meeting and this one, is that possible?
I'll have to check on that.
Okay.
I guess my comment is, Rich, and I understand where you're going, however, some of the questions that we are asking are not addressed. And to have people come expecting to get questions answered that they can continue to not be able to answer is just a frustration. And I don't know, you know, my hat goes off to Bill and Jeff, but they're taking water questions, they're not from Edison Water, you know, and so it's either, it needs to be people above these gentlemen's heads that if they truly, somebody truly does know an answer, come and talk that, but to just, I mean, they're kind of tied with, "We're here to learn, to teach about stage two. We're here to teach about stage two." That's their script. So until we can get other questions answered, I don't know, and if we can insist that somebody from, you know, from higher above that really knows the true water issues and answering the thing, I just, to put these gentlemen through the same thing, it just, it's just frustrating.
I can understand that, but maybe somebody has to know the answers, right? Somebody from up in the upper echelon would know, I would think. And maybe we're directing this to the wrong people.
Well, maybe a suggestion could be that perhaps, I mean, Bill was at both meetings, I know. He's certainly aware of the questions that were not answered. Perhaps Bill and I could sit down, we could go through those questions that weren't answered, and then we could, I mean, a determination might be made that, you know, somebody from the water crew needs to be present, or a water crew supervisor, or Ron Hyde, or whoever the person is. We can work that at the staff level.
That would be great.
If that's the pleasure of the council.
I understand what you're saying on these guys, because I know what their position is on it.
Did Edison have a
Did Edison have a water expert on staff that you're aware of, besides Ron Hyde?
It was Ron Hyde.
Yes. You know, Edison has the responsibility to run a water company here on Catalina Island. I think we have demonstrated we have the folks with the expertise to do that. What we're facing, as this sign says, it's extreme, extreme drought conditions, it's a very, almost historical proportion that this system, the state of California, the West, is adjusting to. Catalina Island and the city of Avalon are not alone in facing some of these same extreme conditions and strategies to manage it and stretch our waters as far as we possibly can. That's the immediate situation. Now, when we talk about considerations for the future, it's very, very related, but a different conversation at the same time. And so getting those questions, bless you, answered or that discussion, you know, will happen, but it's a bit different than our stage two conversation. But we at Edison want our customers to have is a full understanding of what stage two conditions mean. Not everybody was here on the island or in Avalon the last time. I've talked to a number of folks that have had experience from 1977 and 1991. You know, there certainly seems to be a real can-do. I want to use the word, you know, optimistic outlook by a lot of folks, that this too shall pass. I think we all believe it will, and we want to work with everybody to make sure it's as painless as possible.
Bill, I just, I'm sorry, I just want to, I don't want to go into details by any means, but I just want to make the blanket statement that I was reviewing my notes from our council meeting on the 20th of May, and there are still some unanswered questions that the council posed to Edison back in May. So I think you're getting the sense that the council is very frustrated that we're out there, we're the ones talking to the constituents in this community, we're the ones getting the emails, the phone calls, the persons in front of us saying, "Why can't we get answers?" And, you know, quite frankly, I'm kind of in the same boat. I can't get answers from Edison either. Requests for information, you know, and again, I don't want to go into details, but there's still quite a few bullet points from the May 20th meeting that we've not received a response from Edison on. So I hope you're hearing the frustration.
Ah, yeah, I did. And been, been working with city manager's office and with council to make sure that those requests for information are met. I think we've made some pretty good progress, but would appear there's a ways to go, and we'll get there.
Thank you. And Cindy, if you would then share those questions, because you're such a good note taker. Share those questions with he, and then the other one to be answered is in response to Leslie's lovely letter that went to the CPUC, is what, how could Edison be thinking about doing that through stage four in light of what we're doing? I mean, I think that's, that's just a huge question.
That's offensive, is what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
It's offensive. And it's quite discriminatory too, because there's only one company in town that is proposing to install pools, saunas, jacuzzis, spas. What's going on there? You know, people are asking us, they're pointing their fingers at us. I have a, I just, I want to ask you, I was working with Hilda Delgado, I was pushed in her direction, she was the public relations representative for Edison months ago, even before I was elected to city council, I was talking to her. And me and her were making ground, and she offered us a tour through Big Creek to understand your water facilities up there and how you distribute power and you, how you transform that into, how do you distribute water and how you transform that into energy? But I asked specifically, I didn't want to go to Big Creek and find out about Big Creek, I want to know about Avalon. I want to know about Catalina. I want to know from Pebble Beach down to Emerald Bay, wells, allocations, pipelines, water tanks. I want a tour of Avalon. I've asked that. You guys promised it to me, it still hasn't come. You promised me to, you offered Big Creek, and we don't want to go to Big Creek. I don't, I mean, I love Big Creek, I love the Sierra Nevadas, it's a beautiful place. But I have to answer questions in my constituency here, and honestly, there's the city council up here, we're actually thinking of overtaking the water allocations, the water rights here in Avalon, and if not purchasing, if not purchasing it from you, just taking it over, because that's what we want to do. We feel like it's not being managed properly. But you guys have blown me off on this, like, for a long time now, it's been months now. So I'd really appreciate it if you could give me a tour of all the facilities that Edison has and do it in a timely manner, because I've asked for it like four or five months ago, and it's still not here.
That's a standing invitation, council member.
Thank you.
Would love to host you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe, to be fair, I believe you were invited to a tour when Cindy and Ben rode along with Ron Hyde at Pebble Beach, and I believe there might have been a conflict in your schedule. So we probably need to get that rescheduled, but I don't think it's fair to say that we've ignored your request.
Oh, you've ignored me.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
No?
There's nothing, this is not an agendized item.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's oral communications, right?
Right, right.
You can't ask a question.
There's no agendized item to which, to, I mean...
You can ask questions to the council.
Counsel, several months ago, my husband offered to make a huge four-by-eight plywood sign to put on the center stage downtown on Front Street that would be an indicator of where we are with our water levels, like, weekly, and it could be shown. He offered to pay for it, up to $500. I wonder where we are with that, because I think all these signs are wonderful around town, but something huge facing people that, "Oh, we were at 317 acre feet last week. Uh-oh, we're at 310 this week," will really impact them. Something visual, huge, on the stage, all our visitors would see it. Just wondering where you are with that.
So Mayor, Edison came in today with the mockups for the signs, and I believe that Bill told me that the next 10 days or so, they'll be rolled out and in place.
Okay. And is that going to be done locally with...
You'd have to call Bill or Jeff Ford here, I don't know who's producing those, so. Come forward, Bill or Jeff, to talk about that. Whichever one of you knows the answer as to whether they're being produced, I don't know.
They're both coming.
So, yeah, we're going to have a sign over on Front Street, over by the water fountain. That sign is not going to have a water gauge on the reservoir level. What we are proposing is a sign for City Hall and then an additional location where there's a lot of residents that frequent that place, maybe the post office or something like that, where it would actually have a water gauge level for the reservoir, that we'll update on a weekly basis. So we'll have those three signs, along with two additional banners, similar to the one here on the day, as that'll be posted, that'll be hung on Front Street.
So where is the one going that's going to have the little water meter, water sign?
In the lobby of City Hall, and then we're going to reach out to the island company of Post One at the post office as well.
I'm really disappointed, because I spoke to you about this months ago, right after they brought that up, and it was okay and okay, and we were talking about a visual. And so I don't know if we dropped the ball in getting the information to you, what we were looking for. I know you're wanting to keep everything looking consistent, however, just like Feed the Birds to write, "Don't Feed the Birds," a visual is much more effective.
Well, actually, Mayor, if I could, I think they are proposing, it's a gauge that they're, and it's going to...
No, but he said at City Hall and at somewhere else, not downtown.
He's proposing to put it in the post office arcade area, but it is a sign that is consistent with what we talked about, where it is adjusted, it's dynamic, so it's adjusted, and it indicates the water, the acre feet and the rationing level. So there was, I don't believe, I mean, we understood the council's desire, and I believe that's what we're delivering here. I don't believe there's anybody that dropped the ball on this one.
But I think in the middle of downtown, when we've got, because our biggest, I think our, the people that we need to educate the most is our visitors, and we need the visitors and their children to be able to see something visual. And so he goes, "Hey, mommy, what is that?" They'll go, "This is telling us that this little town is in bad shape." That's why I, I think the direction was to go like they did in 1977 with the same thing.
So it sounds like that's just location, and that's what you...
Well, yes, location is very important.
The sign, I think, so perhaps rather than the suggestion for the arcade, it could be back on Crescent Avenue, I think that part of the concern, you know, and we did talk to Wayne and others about it, was overload. We'll have a bunch of signs right down there, and that's, one of them can be this one.
Well, I think that's going to be more impactful than some of the others.
And we'd be happy to revisit this. We didn't know if the reservoir level would resonate with the visitors coming in, that was more of information for the residents on the island, that we didn't know if a 300 acre foot level on a reservoir would resonate with the visitors. That's why we stuck with this concept here, but we can certainly revisit that if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I think with this, and then they're hit with that, and then they're coming off the boat, and then they're going to go, "Oh, this is what the heck they're talking about." A visual is, words are not, you know, I mean, that gives an idea, but if that drink of water was a huge glass of water, and every time you went down three or four acre feet, you colored it down so that it was clear, and now you're looking at, oh, shoot, you just have itty-bitty water down there at the very bottom.
Yeah, there's a potential for vandalism, people playing with the gauge on there.
No, no, just paint it down. You just paint it down. It's not a big deal. It's just a, it's a painted sign, and you just paint it down. It's very simple to me.
I agree wholeheartedly with having information to educate the guests coming, the visitor coming to the island, and families. I do not think that a reservoir level will make a bit of difference or understanding to the guest, but possibly another solution could be, instead of having that, is to have a little section that says, "Things you can do to help our community," and list out, like, "Don't change," or "Don't reuse your towels," or, you know, list some of those top 20 or 40 items of water conservation that, you know, we could help the guests understand how they can help us, because I don't think that somebody's going to understand what the reservoir level means.
No, but if you said, "Watch our water drop." Water in a glass, water in a reservoir, they're just seeing it in a glass. Watch our water drop, and every time they look at it, that glass is less and less and less full. Not in the reservoir, they're not going to understand the concept of the reservoir, but they're going to, anyway, it's just a difference.
Yeah.
Visually, it's easier to see.
I think so, but...
And if you incorporate what the levels mean, so you have your water thermometer, this is how many gallons we got, or how many acre feet we have, and we got the 300, we're going to stage one, we got the 200, we're going to stage three, stage two, then stage three, and then at 100, we're going to stage four, and what that means, about a 25% reduction, a 50% reduction, a 75% reduction, I think that would be more meaningful than just having a thermometer, because like, people don't relate to that. And also, you know, one thing is, most of our visitors will only see that once.
Bam, 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 bam. How many people, times do people walk in front of that stage?
Most of our visitors will only see it one time. They're not here for a week.
If they all see it once, that's good.
They see it once.
If they all see it once, that's a good thing.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's be clear.
While we're picking on Edison, I just want to add a question to the list of the questions that we have. I've asked Bill and Cooper Cameron to confirm Edison's position that conversion to transit rental does not affect water usage. It's one of the questions that came up at the planning commission meeting, and so far we haven't got a response back. That was a, something that came from Rosie Ro Haley in her tenure, and so we're just asking Edison to reconfirm that if you take a residence and convert it to transit use, that it does not negatively impact the water usage in that unit. So that's going to come up as part of your study session, so I thought I would just add that to the list of questions that we're going to get to Edison, if we could. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thanks, Mina. Oh, it's Jen.
Well, I have a positive water announcement. We recently installed water polo goals at South Beach, and tomorrow, Wednesday, is the first organized event there. So any adults or any youth that have experience in water polo, we're inviting to come and play a little warm-up at 5:30 and then a scrimmage at 6:00 PM. It's free, it's going to be just a blast. So that's going to be every Wednesday for the rest of summer till the water gets too cold for anyone to come. 5:30 warm-up, 6 o'clock scrimmage, everyone's welcome.
And it seems, the program seems to be going well?
Oh, it's non-stop.
Balls are not lost and...
No, it's going great.
Good. Oh, yeah. Should we start dredging? Yeah. We've got a lot of positive comments on the, on that, down there. Thank you, Jen.
Okay, before we go into the Gazette calendar, anybody have... Oh, there's Jordan. Jordan, thank you.
Hi, Jordan Monroe, management aide. I just wanted to give up an update on vehicle noise testing. We are currently into four of the six months of the grace window for the annual vehicle registration and vehicle noise testing. We've tested 1,516 vehicles, or about 93% about of the residential autowrecks for noise, and of that, 179 have exceeded the 74 decibel threshold. That's a failure rate of 12%. The average passing level is 71.8 decibels. That excludes electric vehicles, smart cars and trucks. The average failing rate is 75.9. 37% or 67 of the vehicles that failed have retested after getting maintenance done, with 79% or 53 of them passing at an average of 72.5 decibels. So that's slightly higher than the passing average. After this maintenance and retesting, our failure rate currently stands at just over 8%. In addition, 177 vehicles, or another 12%, equal to the total number of vehicles that failed, fall within .3 decibels of not passing, 73.7 to 73.9. So while these vehicles technically pass, they are within a range that makes them most likely to not pass if they go unchecked. So if people hear loud vehicles on the road, it is possible that they barely passed this time, or have since experienced mechanical issues which require maintenance and will not pass once tested again. Overall, 402 vehicles fell within 73.0 and 73.9 decibels, which is over 26%. That means almost 40% of our vehicles are either excessively loud or very close to not passing. We're continuing to test every Monday morning from 9:00 AM till noon. Feel free to call City Hall and confirm that we'll be testing each week, or that particular week that you want to come out. This is for testing for late vehicles, new purchases, and retests. And you can retest your vehicle as much as you like or as needed until you have to pass. Any questions?
That's intense. That's very good.
Too much money and gas.
Let me ask, because was phase two of this whole, at some point, we were working on impound and removal?
Well, that's related, but was a kind of a separate, but coming in tangentially at the same time. So we've got vehicles right now that we have to deal with starting October 1st, in the sense that they can't be registered with the city, so they're no longer allowed to be operated within the city of Avalon. So presumably, yes, they have to be shipped off to the island and dealt with. At the same time, they're figuring out impound issues to deal with vehicles that are abandoned on the streets, which may become an issue as well. So we have to kind of work hand-in-hand with that. We, so the impound issue is being looked at. We're also looking with solutions and what to do and help move the process forward with all the vehicles that don't pass and aren't going to work here. So we've had some opportunities come up. Other outside players have presented opportunities for us to help deal with their cars. So we're in discussion with Mercedes-Benz of Laguna and Gal, and they're interested... So we're in discussion with Mercedes-Benz of Laguna and Gal, and they're interested in providing a Catcher Clunkers type program for your old golf cart if you're looking to buy a smart car. So we're talking to them about that kind of option so we can present these opportunities to the community. So that is a huge thing that we have to come up with.
That's a step in the right direction. How far, how far are we from getting rid of all our old golf carts that we need to get rid of? I mean.
Well, the hard part is, like you heard, there's 400 of them that fall within one decibel of not passing, but they still technically pass. So they're still at higher levels of noise, however, they don't qualify as quote, offensively loud, but they are louder. And so I do suspect it would be at least a few years before the dust settles on going through all of these vehicles that are kind of at that excessive level and getting them figured out, as well as bringing in better solutions and having people then stay on top of the maintenance.
Yeah, we got to give people options for sure. We just, we can't leave them standing or pick on them and.
Absolutely.
Leave them with no options for sure.
The data shows so far and from talking to the different dealerships, that maintenance is the biggest contributor to vehicle noise. There are other considerations we have to deal with, but regular responsible maintenance as a vehicle owner, to be a responsible vehicle owner is, that's something that you kind of have to do.
We appreciate you.
But we're totally, are absolutely aware of that and don't, the goal of this isn't to put people in the tough situations, improve the quality of life for the residents and visitors. So we, with that in mind, we want to work with people to move this forward as much as possible.
Appreciate you reaching out to the dealerships and finding other options. That's, that's really important at this point.
Yeah, and we want to work with the local dealerships as well, too. They're very aware and on board with helping us out to figure out what we can do to help out residents, to help out vehicle owners.
Exactly.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jordan.
And just one other thing, I don't know, Ben, if, everybody's been busy, did you have an opportunity to ask Denise if she wanted to give us and could give us an update on the contracts?
On the leases.
On the leases, I mean.
Next to Jen.
Look at her face. Never mind.
Actually, next to Jen. We're going to be sending you some information tomorrow on that. Yeah, so we will have an update on that.
Okay, don't look at me like that. We did shout about it, but that was only yesterday or something.
I think we had some internal discussions today, so it's probably appropriate to send me some, for me to send you some internal communication, then we can go from there.
Okay, thank you. All righty, shall we go? Any other oral communications? Let's go to the consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, you've got seven items on your consent calendar this evening. Actions from the July 15th council meeting. You've got a couple sets of expenditures and warrants totaling $728,000 approximately. You have an item requesting payment for organization and promotion services rendered for the 2013 Catalina Island Grand Prix. You have an item related to video surveillance equipment for the mole, the pier and the fuel dock. A contract renewal request that's come back to you for the chief building official position. A professional services agreement with on-the-wing falconry, and yes, that's, that's the end of your consent calendar this evening.
As a point of information, the warrants are really like a million bucks. There's two sets of warrants on the agenda.
I'm sorry, Mayor, let me say that again.
The warrants are closer to a million bucks. There's two sets of warrants on the agenda.
I misspoke the total. Yes, you're, you're right. Do we have, we have $728,000 listed. We actually didn't include the other sets of total?
No, 675 and 347.
Yep.
Two and three.
I'm sorry, my mistake. I'm, two and three are together. My bad. Thank you. Sometimes I don't speak awry, so I had to have you clarify what you meant. I apologize.
What's the pleasure?
On item number seven on the consent calendar, because it does involve a contract with the island company, council members Hernandez and Magog and Cassidy would be abstaining from that due to financial conflict of interest. But because it's on consent calendar, if that item goes forward, they can, they don't have to leave the building.
Darn, we could talk about them. Again.
I'd like.
If they're polled, yes.
I'd like four, five and seven to be removed.
Six, please.
Yes, we're just about done.
Okay, four, five, six and seven are polled.
Move staff on one to three.
No, no worries. The video.
Move staff from one to three.
Consent item one to three, one, two and three.
Second.
Call for the vote?
What are you doing? Yeah. Did you push it, Richard? All eyes.
Perfect.
Okay, so that would put us on item number four, which is the request for payment for organization and promotional services for the 2013 Catalina Island Grand Prix. This staff report is from my office. We received an invoice from Buddy and Eric Menudo shortly after the time I started here working for the city back in September of 2013, and this invoice was for promotional services for the 2013 race. As council obviously well knows, we did not convene a race in 2013 or 2014. Council helped me out two months ago, I believe. We officially canceled the 2014 Grand Prix efforts and so, as a housekeeping matter and out of respect for work previously done, it was recommended by council member Hernandez to bring this forward to settle up our debts, if you will, one of them being the promotional work done for this race that didn't ultimately come to fruition. So there's an invoice attached to the staff report. Again, the invoice amount is in $5,250. It is above the city manager's pay threshold, which is why it is brought to you. I'd probably bring it to you even if it was $4,999, but anyway, if you're wondering why. And I'd be happy to answer questions about that if you have any.
I just like the little more detailed invoice, it's a little vague.
Yes, this is the invoice that I have received and I can certainly make that request of Buddy and Eric Menudo that we'd like some detail to go with that. If that's the pleasure of the council, I'm happy to communicate that.
Do we have any kind of contract with them for their services ahead of time?
We do not.
Or an agreement?
And that was one of, that was one of the challenges that I faced and at the time when I came on board, the prevailing wisdom was that we were going to be convening another race and so the suggestion was that we could, if you will, enter into a professional services agreement and there would be, for lack of a better term, in advance as part of that contract wherein they would recoup the work that they had done for the past race that didn't come to fruition. And so within that professional services agreement, we were going to outline the scope of work and the terms and the responsibilities. That never came to fruition. So what we have is this invoice and I can follow up with the Menudos based on council direction, of course.
I don't think he's really hiding anything. Yeah, maybe a little more detail, but he did a lot of work, he did a lot of hard work in it and I don't think he's hiding anything. I just like to go ahead and go through with it and make a motion that we go ahead and vote on it tonight.
I don't think he's hiding anything, he's just not giving us any detail. That's a $5,000 invoice with kind of like three line items on it.
Like I said, I don't think he's hiding anything. That's, we could still get an invoice from him later, right? Either way.
Whatever the council, please, I'm happy to do whatever you guys want, of course.
Yeah, I would second that motion and I'd just say that I definitely request that we get a more detailed invoice from him.
So just to make sure that I fulfill the expectations, I would think that a.
The appropriate motion then would be to move that we approve the invoice subject to the providing of a more detailed statement to the city manager and upon receipt of that more detailed statement, that will authorize the actual payment of this invoice, which is consistent with, I think, what everyone's been saying.
No.
No?
No, it's not consistent with what I believe, so I just want to say that's not consistent with everyone.
Okay, and I just was seeking the type of clarification, if you did want me to get that, what that would mean, and I was envisioning hours worked and rate of pay and description of tasks, whatever. Well, again, I don't know if we have, whatever the pleasure the council is.
I'd just like to hear what city's concern is, other than the lack of a contract.
Oh, I, I don't think it's appropriate on any level whatsoever to pay an invoice that is not detailed for contract services that were provided to the city. I'm not suggesting that he hasn't earned some sort of remuneration for the work that he's done. I think there's not a soul who was present or participative in any way, shape or form that doesn't know the contribution that he and his family and Island Motorcycle Club and many, many, many others put into the first race that happened. But this isn't about the first race, this is about going forward and I'm not doing due diligence by any means authorizing an invoice that is very, very vague. And I think that if we were to even hold this over for a meeting and ask for a more detailed invoice, I think we would be serving far better than just determining we're going to pay somebody $5,000 for no contract and no scope of work and I don't think that's doing due diligence. And please, I.
You know, I think that Scott had a substitute motion for Mr. Hernandez that covered those things, at least to the extent that the city manager.
But we're still authorizing the payment, provided that he, I mean, we don't know really what these, you know, we don't know what the, what the work is that he's really done. So how can we authorize and say it's okay to pay it when we don't even know what it is?
I guess the motion would be, is to authorize payment subject to the city manager's determination upon reviewing the invoice that the charges were, are detailed, descriptive and were beneficial toward the prospects of having the race in 2013. And so that would be the motion. There's already a first and a second for it.
Oh, that's your, your, you revised the motion.
Okay, all right.
So that means that we would be making a motion, if we went with your revised motion, we're making a motion to agree to the payment and that Ben decides whether or not the fees are.
Upon receipt of a detailed invoice that describes the work done and that in Ben's discretion provided, provided value toward the efforts of the race in 2013.
How are you feeling about that?
Did you live with that, Ben?
I think, I think we can do that. I think that, so, you know, it'd be like what I was suggesting earlier, you'd want to know the amount of hours expended in particular areas, the rate of pay for each particular task, and you know, if it's different, what was the result, right? Because these are things that I'm interested in obtaining as well and I'm happy to do that.
I'd feel comfortable with that.
And was this a budgeted item?
It is not budgeted.
Nope. I don't think it was.
It was budgeted.
Well, there was a, there was a, there was a budget for the race.
But it wasn't.
That included in our discussions all the cost.
There's no line item for this in the most recent budget that we just left and the new one we're heading into. How about that?
There you go.
We can add that, though.
And if he's the only guy that's left that hasn't been paid and he was the promoter and he made all this happen, let's get him paid. Let's, okay, he can, I'm sure he's going to turn in an invoice to us, let's get him paid and let's get out from underneath this and just call it a really successful race and a good event and it was great and we don't want to leave anybody hanging like this, so.
I agree.
Let's get him paid.
So it's been moved and seconded?
Yeah.
That was his original. Are we moving and seconding on the first or the?
No, it has been moved and seconded.
Is it moved and seconded on the substituted motion?
Yes, yes.
Public discussion?
All right, Scott.
And call for the vote?
All eyes.
Okay, the next item, I'd like to call forward the harbor master to please give you a brief staff report on the video surveillance equipment replacement. Brian Brad, thank you.
Good evening. Back in 2007, we received a grant and installed a camera system throughout the harbor. Recently, we've experienced failures with the DVRs which record what the cameras see. We're asking to replace those digital video recorders. Pat Grady, who's the IT consultant for the city, went out and asked for three bids. The only one that came back was the person or the company that put the original system in. They came over, reviewed the system that they'd like to install with Pat and myself and came up with the expenditure of, I believe it's like $32,000 and we have $35,000 budgeted in the 2014, 15 budget for the item. So where there used to be a recorder at the casino that's gone out, two recorders out at the mole that have gone out, we have one recorder still working at the pier. Instead of having four recorders, the new technology allows for one recorder to be housed at the pier and all three or four locations will be fed into the pier via the new fiber optic line that we have from the casino, the mole, the pier to City Hall.
Now, this also goes to the sheriff's station too, right, Brian?
The sheriffs do have access to it. They haven't had now that we've lost.
Because it's been broken down, okay. Is there any way they could help subsidize this in any way?
I don't, I think they're just a recipient of what we already get.
Okay. We originally paid for it with a grant from Homeland Security?
Correct. A support security grant.
Is there any more money out there?
Support security grants, I've just recently looked into after I spoke to Cindy this afternoon. They are a competitive grant that doesn't say whether you're going to get it or not. You apply for them in March and they award them in July.
We could certainly pursue that.
That would be my request and, and reason for wanting to pull the item is that after we spoke today, Brian, I realized that it's probably too late for us to try to get a grant for this year. However, if we could direct staff to go look at funding opportunities, I think one of the points that was brought up today was, you know, technology changes and the system was installed years ago and so even potentially looking, going for further funding, we could possibly put in for upgrades or additional pieces to the system. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a replacement, but upgrades and enhancements to it. But I'd like to see us try to go after more, more funding.
Sure. So this 35 grand for one VCR, one glorified high-tech VCR.
No.
It's basically what it is.
I don't have the quote in front of me, you may have a copy of it, but.
It's, yeah, it's actually, if I could, let's see, it's a video management system upgrade, there's camera, oh, sorry.
Camera licenses.
Section two, channel video recorder, hybrid NVR processor, cam, camera license, preconfiguration work. I don't know, Brian, you probably know more about this, obviously, and I do, the installation, you need a project engineer.
Looks like the DVR is a $13,000 expense and then some encoders to go from a analog camera to make it digital to transmover is another $3,000 and that's in one location for, I want to say, four cameras at 580 bucks a piece.
I really question this as well and in part of the, part of the conversation, which, you know, Brian, I'm sorry, I'm reiterating all the points we talked about today, but part of the benefit of this is, it is sort of our eyes and maybe not yours, but our eyes when we're not able to be there. So trip and fall hazards that happen on the pier, you know, potential things that happen downtown or vandalism that happens on our floats, concerns that happen at the mole, you know, this is really our, our town security system. So, and I did also ask that, so in saying that, I'm sorry, potentially legally, in legal fees, it could save us a lot of money. In addition to that, I did also ask whether or not it was budgeted and it was budgeted in the last fiscal year, I believe.
In this coming fiscal.
In this, I'm sorry, in this fiscal year, so.
The second to last trial the city went to involved a slip and a fall in the harbor and the key piece of evidence in that lawsuit was the video of the woman slipping and the jury looked at that and felt that the city was not liable. So that, that further support of councilwoman's comment.
No, I agree that it works, it's just.
No, I agree that it works. It's just, you can pick up an eight-camera system from Costco for a grand. So we're spending $35,000 for a 16-camera system. It just, it doesn't...
It's 35 cameras throughout the area between the casino, the pier, and the mole.
But did we ever look at just replacing those VCRs? As opposed to one giant one with the converter to the, to the fiber?
You know, that's a question for Pat. I believe that it was looked at, and instead of doing, you know, for individuals, he put it together as a cost savings.
We could certainly come back and provide you with his determination as to why he went this route, and we'd be happy to do that if that would help you.
Yeah, I think, I think, I don't want to get caught in a rest of judgment.
That would be helpful, because I think that the people in the city would like to know what the state of our current system is in, if we haven't got those details. That way, we can justify this.
I can tell you that...
Because there's no, oh, you can't, because there's no doubt in my mind we need it.
The current system is dead.
It's dead?
It's dead. We have recorders on the pier, period.
Okay, because I have talked to one of the detectives at the sheriff's station, and he said it was something that would really be helpful to them as well.
Charlie Burschmidt had sent these recorders in to DigiOp who manufacture them, and they're saying, "I'm sorry, it's old technology, and we don't support it, and it can't be fixed."
All right.
So that's why we went to Pat and said, "Can you help us out and spec out the new system?"
But we can certainly obtain from Pat, you know, the breakdown as to how he made this determination, and we can easily do that and come back to you. It's not a problem.
And on these systems, are there like guarantees and warranties and...
I want to say this has a three-year warranty on it.
Yeah, waterproof cameras?
No, it's, it's not cameras. We already have the cameras. We're not replacing the cameras at all. What we're doing is replacing the recorder and putting equipment in to make it record through the fiber optic lines, instead of having the wireless from the mole, wireless from the casino to the harbor office.
Is something that needs, is this pretty urgent to you in your, in your point of view?
Every day that goes by, if something were to happen, it's not recorded. And as Scott pointed out, you know, that slip and fall, that's the only thing that saved us in the lawsuit, was the pictures that had been presented.
So we can get no images at all right now?
Other than on the pier.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Just to beat the horse to death, there is a, there is a line here in the staff report at the bottom that talks about, "With our recent IT upgrades and improvements, we were able to benefit from cost savings by reducing the equipment needed." One of our IT projects was the mole, pier, casino, pump house interconnection with fiber. And so this fiber line gives us the opportunity to install one camera server as opposed to four. And before, you had to have four camera servers in order to make this work. So, you know, Pat has done a good job for the city in a lot of other areas. He always does try to save us money where possible. But I can certainly come back and give you some additional details as to how he arrived at the configuration and why, and so forth. Not a problem.
Would Gina have any input for us on this?
This is a Pat, this is a Pat Grady project.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Other comment?
I would rather wait to get additional information on this.
They're moved and seconded. Call for the vote?
Three ayes, Marshal Cassidy Hernandez, two nos, Sampson and Olson.
Item number six on the consent calendar is the renewal of the contract with Haveltic Consulting, who provides the city with building official services. You'll recall that this was on the last agenda. There was questions about comparable contracts in like cities. Staff met with a subset of the council to review some comp figures. That is attached to this staff report. The staff report also does reflect a reduction in the proposed increase in hourly rate, and the planning director is here to answer any additional questions you may have on this item.
I'm not sure if anyone else had any comments on this one since I pulled it, but I just had two comments that I had wanted to make, and I just wanted to do those publicly, and are actually three. And Ben, you just made one of those, which was that we, we did meet to talk a little bit about the contract itself and the service that's provided to the city. I, as part of looking at fees and as we're in this budget cycle, have talked to city staff today, and a relative number of income that we receive from building-related fees is right around $105,000 to $108,000 that the city receives. And our finance director has assured me that that's a pretty fair number to say. So those fees that we receive as revenue to the city help to offset this, this contract and this service that Haveltic provides for us. So that was one point. The second point that I felt pretty strong after about the 11th or 12th person came to talk to me was that Mr. Zupinger has a wonderful reputation in town. I had more than I ever expected of the contractors or participants in the community come and give their regards for you, and just to say what a great job you were doing, how fair you were, how you were getting people on the up and up, finding things that have never been found by prior building officials, and that they were also, some that came to me said that you were helping to make it a fair playing ground in the city, and that those that have gotten away with doing things for years are no longer getting away with it, and it's making it a fair playing field for those in the community that are licensed, insured, bonded, doing, doing things and spending the money on their businesses that they need to in order to be on the up and up. So I really wanted to point that out to you, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the contract.
I just have one thing on it, too. Brian, I can't agree with Cindy anymore, because Brian does a great job for the city. The only thing is, we already set the bar with the unions, right? We haven't negotiated with any of the department heads yet. We have with everybody else and set the bar at 2%. Is that correct?
That's, the proposed cost of living adjustment for the next fiscal year budget, well, budget cycle that we're in is 2%. 2%, excuse me, not to beat it to death, 2% net, one association will be receiving a 4% offset and increase in retirement contribution.
Basically, it's 2%.
Yes.
2%.
Yes.
And I, and I just hate us for, to go over, I'd really like to see us stick to our guns at 2% across the board from top to bottom. I know, and like I say, Brian does a great job for us, and I don't know really exactly what all the difference was. Would you say a dollar or something?
Yeah, so that a 2% increase over his current rate would be a dollar an hour increase to $51 an hour.
Yeah. But that's just my input on it. I don't know what kind of flack we're going to get from the other parties that are involved. If, I mean, if there's that much difference in it, I'm not sure. But that's just all I have to say. But Brian does a great job for the city. I know that for a fact.
Other comments? Public comment? Call for the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, call for the vote? Thank you.
All ayes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a professional services agreement with On...
Sorry.
Bye, guys. Again, it's a professional services agreement with On the Wing Falconry for falconry and nuisance bait, nuisance bird abatement services. This is with Rocky Post. This is a contract that is for roughly one month in duration. We will be coming back to you with another contract to take effect after Labor Day. Jen Monroe has spearheaded this effort. I should also point out that there is a hard copy attachment on your, at your desk that relates to this item from the island company. And Jen would be happy to answer any questions about this if you do have them.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, Ollie.
Do you concur with the island company's request to remove that second-to-last paragraph?
In discussing with the contractor, we really felt that it was important for him to know that we weren't trying to string him along with a series of very short-term contracts, like this six-week contract. We really felt in discussions with the chamber and the city that both of our organizations wanted to enter into a one-year agreement, and we felt that that was important to state openly with the contractor, so that he had the huge startup cost for him to bring birds back over and retrain them and reacclimate them. We felt that that was an important thing to state.
And I think I should further add that Jen's done a lot of work to cobble together a coalition of replacements for the party that will be dropping out after Labor Day. And we fully expect to be able to replace that partnership loss with a patchwork quilt of business owners and individuals who feel this is an important service to the community. So, but we think that what you have in front of you accurately reflects what the situation is, and we don't see anything wrong. We're not passing judgment on that. We're just stating the facts.
But one of the intended signatures doesn't like the contract the way it's written with that clause.
Well, but one of the intended signatories needs to understand that that is the term, and if they, you know, you know, it is a contract for that duration, and I don't see anything slanderous or outrageous about that. I mean, that's the term of the agreement. Their participation, they've very publicly stated, will lapse after Labor Day. So, you know, I think that the facts are the facts.
This is, this is a one-month contract between us, the chamber, the company, and the bird guy.
That's correct.
And somebody doesn't like to have that last paragraph talking about as the intent.
Well, I mean, the council can certainly change that. If that's the pleasure of the council, that's, that's fine, you know? We just, we just wanted the council and the community to know that this is what the arrangement was, and if you wanted to make it different, that's, that's okay.
I don't think we're changing the term of the contract.
It's just a comment.
It's just a comment. They were changing it. That's fine.
Yeah, Ollie, I agree, because it's the intention. So why would we put, it's the intention that we have a coalition in a contract, when if something doesn't happen, I think the cover letter that says they may be gone after that, and this is our attempt, but I don't want them to hold us to creating a coalition either.
That's fine. Again, the intent to put it in was because we did feel like, since the original draft of the contract was it's going to be a one-year agreement, and then that changed, that's, that is why.
No, I mean, I understand that, but I think to have an intent in, I don't, this is the one, just this one paragraph right there, huh? I agree that we...
Correct, yeah. The paragraph that they're asking to be excluded is highlighted in your...
Yeah, I would say take that out.
I'm of approval with removal of that offending paragraph before item four.
And is there any comments?
And just so you know, because this is a contract, we need three votes.
Okay. At water again.
We have not a majority.
Nope, three votes. Contract resolutions and ordinances require three votes.
Okay, this has been moved and seconded. Do you have any comments, Joe? Did I? I seconded it.
Yeah, I'd like to explain a little more in detail exactly why this is not acceptable to you, this, the way it's written out right here. That's all. I just, I want to understand.
That last paragraph, Joe?
Yeah, this one here.
Says, because in a contract, you wouldn't, I don't think you would say, now, this is the city speaking, is the party's intention that after September, a coalition of businesses be providing monthly payments instead of the San Catalina Island Company. A new, a new contract is expected to be entered into to extend the time. Well, if we don't get the coalition together, and I guess they're assuming it's our responsibility to get the coalitions together, I don't, I think that's, he's going to come back and say, "Oh, yeah, where's the coalition?" And we're going to go, "Well, we didn't get it till September 20th." I mean, it could be a date as well as nobody signs up.
So basically, this party is not going to be part of this contract after a month?
This contract...
Exactly. The company will not, correct.
So they're, they're dropping out of this?
Exactly.
So it's just us?
Yes.
So...
And, and the chamber.
And the chamber.
And the chamber.
And then a coalition of people that will take the place of the contribution of $2,200 a month.
Yeah, we are...
That's fine. That's, it's fine with me. I think we should do that. I'm not understanding why this particular company isn't interested, because they own many restaurants and outdoor patio dining places in town, and they have a lot of places on the streets that actually attract and collect trash and birds and animals and other things. That's not my understanding why they don't want to be a part of this. But, yeah, let's get them out of there then, for sure.
Okay.
Did you ask a public comment?
I think we asked a public comment. Would you like some more? The public has spoken.
But it's a good job, Jennifer. It's a good job getting that coalition together. Thank you. We'll do it on our own with, with the help of the other people, yeah.
They're moved and seconded?
So what is, what is, what is it that we're voting on now? Would you clarify that now?
You're voting on the one-month contract with the language saying that it is the intent to put a coalition together to replace the company out. We're taking that language out, but we're still going to go ahead and do that.
And then this contract is valid minus that?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, call for the vote?
It's three ayes and two abstentions, Cassidy and Hernandez.
Okay, general business.
Let's wait just a moment for the other two of your colleagues to return. Okay, the first item, actually, you have two items on general business this evening. First item relates to an ordinance for single-room occupancy facilities, and the planning director was here a moment ago.
Smart lady, Dale.
And I don't know where she went. However, I do know that there are some questions about this. I know, before we get into a lengthy discussion, I think there may be interest in tabling this item later, so perhaps before I launch into that, we could have the council discuss her desire.
I'm going to tabling.
I would just respectfully say that we received a letter from Greg Freeman, who addressed several points. I think everybody got a copy of it. Very well-written. Thank you very much for that. Initiated much more conversation with city staff and us, and also initiated for the planning director to go back and review the meetings. I had requested copies of those meetings, but there are hours of footage to review, of which we did not have an opportunity to do before tonight's meeting. But there is already a few changes, a couple points, and that have been changed to the ordinance, and there's more forthcoming. So that would be my request, and rather than going into any detail right now, is to just table it.
I would just say that I think the planning commission had about three sessions on this particular ordinance, and they discussed a lot of the points raised. And so what we'll be coming back with is an explanation as to what that discussion was from the planning commission, as well as to address one correction that the planning commission made that was not reflected in the ordinance before you. So we're, so we're going to make that. That one deals with the three, is going to be three bathrooms. No, I'm sorry. One bathroom for every three single residential occupancy units.
So they'll get a copy of the letter just for, kind of, two, maybe?
Well, you will, because with the planning commission's already...
Well, you will, because with the planning commission's already, well, we're going to bring this back to you with an explanation as to what the planning commission considered, what their thought process was. And we'll probably make those videotapes available to the council if you wanted to look at their deliberations on this.
Table, table?
Table.
Okay, item number nine.
Okay, very good. The last item under general business this evening is your completed Avalon City Council Policies Manual. Ah, I see Mayor Protem, oh, no, one.
I have mine.
Okay, great. Now, you will note that you can't take mine because mine has pink flamingos on it, so if you do take mine, I'm going to know. Not my design, but I do like it. Anyway, so this reflects the work that you have done over the last couple months, and incorporates the rules that govern you. We completely intend to have this be a living document that we can update as we see a need or want to make a revision, add a chapter, et cetera. So tonight, you've got your reference tool here. It was our expectation that you would probably want to keep them with you on the dais, so as you're going through your meeting, if you want to check on what the appropriate protocol is, it'll be there as a tool. If not, I will certainly have the pink flamingo copy here, I'm happy to loan you, as long as I get it back. And Jordan or Scott really did all the work on this, and they'd be happy to answer questions about it.
Thank you for incorporating all of my changes. That's great. And I noticed.
I actually typed them up myself.
Thank you.
Oh, God, how much did that cost us?
No, I don't think he did.
It's lovely reading, if anybody would like to write something.
It's a public document, absolutely.
Okay, pleasure of the council.
I think there is, oh, yeah, we just want you to adopt the policy manual as what the changes suggested by.
I'll move to adopt the policy manual changes adopted by the council.
Where's Sheriff Ew?
Public comment?
Okay, call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, should we take city attorney reports and council members' reports before we go into the hospital?
Yeah, sorry, I was just noticing, I didn't get a report this evening, but yes, I, it's okay. I think you could do that, that would work, probably.
Okay, city attorney, do you have any report?
Nothing.
Oh, okay. Council member report.
One, I will be attending the Gateway Cities Council of Government Board Meeting tomorrow night, and I will be, I will be attending with former councilman Michael Ponce, who will do an official handover. Second, I had a question for city manager and possibly our fire chief, but he is not here. Does the city have a written overall emergency response plan?
I believe we do. Yes, and then, in fact, we've gone through a number of our plans and documents of late because Parsac is our liability insurance provider is going to be out here in a matter of days, and they're asking to see all those when they're here.
Can I request a copy of that just for review?
Sure, absolutely.
Sorry, Cindy might be very comprehensive, you might just pop over the fire station, yes.
It's at the fire station?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and then, I just feel compelled to make this comment, so I would like to give a public shout-out and a thank you to our Public Works Department. I was walking from the parking lot behind the sheriff's station at about 4:00 one morning, heading out fishing, and it was a Sunday morning, I believe it would thus be the 6th of July, and between the Pete's Cafe and I guess down, in one spot down Front Street, unfortunately, there were very extensive spots of unfortunate vomit on the streets. Obviously, people had a good time the night before, but what struck me about that was while it was very disgusting, normally when I walk to work between 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning, and I walk down Front Street, the streets are spick and span. And so I, most of us are not up and out and about that early in the morning, but that has got to be one of the most thankless jobs that the city employees do, is to clean up after others. And I notice every morning, especially in the summer when I'm walking to work, I notice how clean Front Street is, the trash is picked up, there was trash at 4:00 in the morning all over the beach, all down Front Street. Usually, I don't see any of that, and it's a thankless job, so please tell your staff, Dennis, thank you so much for the work that they do.
I second that, yes, absolutely.
And that's it?
Nice. Yes, so, I just would like to make an announcement that we've lost one of our World War II veterans, grand marshal, and as far as we know, it was the oldest living islander to date, and that was two days ago. And that was Johnny Marin. He was one of the 15 grand marshals in our parade this year, and I just, I want, my condolences go out to the family, from all of us in the city council here. We want you to know how grateful we are for Johnny Marinovich's service to our country and his service to our community, and the gentleman was, he was a gentleman. And so to Johnny, and Josette, and Ryan, and Bill, and, is Johnny's sister, I'm sorry, Jackie, I'm sorry, there we go. Jackie, you as well, my condolences, our condolences goes out to you. This is a little something that was written up by the city staff and Jordan, and we just, we'd like to read this to you. John Marinovich, one of the 15 grand marshals for the 2014 Fourth of July Parade, passed away yesterday, August 4th, 2014. John was born and raised on Catalina Island and served in the United States Navy in 1943 and 1944 as a Cox Wayne aboard the ship 242 and 720, which were landing crafts, I believe, very large landing crafts, which sailed to Hawaii, Okinawa, Shanghai, and Hong Kong. The city and community were fortunate enough to celebrate John's service as we took a moment to salute to the honored veterans, heroes of our hearts, for the Fourth of July Parade. This was a special moment for John and his family, and his son and grandson, who drove and got to experience the parade by his side, and were with him as he received a proclamation from the City of Avalon City Council recognizing his service during World War II. Today, we take a moment to remember John, and in recognition and celebration of John's life, the city, the city is flying its flags at half-mast. So to you guys, Johnny, especially Johnny Marin, his son Johnny, we're going to send you that picture, Jennifer took one today, and I'll make sure you get that first thing. And like I said, we're sad for your loss, and we celebrate your dad's life because there's a lot of good memories we have from Captain Johnny in the harbor. I know Brian knows, he knew Johnny, Captain Johnny very well, and we did his kids as well, Beetle and everybody knows about that. There's another announcement I'd like to make aside from this one, we also lost another veteran, a Marine. His name was Ray Grant. I believe he served in Vietnam, and he also served in the Gulf War. He resided in Avalon here, and he was a, he was a fine man, and he was a good chef as well, and he served our country, and we owe him a debt of gratitude, and that's why we're making these announcements tonight, so that we won't forget this, and it's down, and it's recorded, that these men served our country, and we salute you guys, and we thank you very much for your service. And that's my announcement for tonight.
I've got some mundane things. We have spoken about getting a nice video display to replace the nice video projector so that we can get high-tech presentations here, and I also noticed that both of the monitors in the council chambers appear to be unplugged, so I'm guessing that they're not functioning.
That's correct. The meeting is being broadcast to the public, however, the display is not working, you're correct.
So if we could take some steps forward on that, that would be really cool.
Yes, and that's a proposal within this next budget.
Now, we already approved some stuff out of it.
Well, yeah, there was a little jump in the gun there.
And one of the things, I was walking down Metropole, and the light, the power pole between the corner of Metropole and Crescent and the one about halfway up with the carlot, the power lines appears to be sagging significantly, like it's in the bush, in the trees, and not that our kids are going to be throwing their tennis shoes over the line, but, mm. Okay, that's all my mundane stuff.
And another kudo to Public Works during the monsoon, because I was down at the beach, we were under the pier, and it was amazing, I think everybody thought it was going to be over in just a minute, and then it just kept going and going and going, and the guys deployed and had great things lifted up, and they were very responsive, it was very good.
Did we get an answer back from broadband about televising the council meetings back on Saturday at 9:00?
We did.
Did we get an answer back?
Catalina broadband will now, at Councilmember Hernandez's initiation, will be broadcasting this meeting on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. till whenever it ends. I want to say 9/11, but that's probably not going to be the case. Every Saturday following the council meeting going forward, they have graciously agreed to do that, we will provide them with a DVD following the meeting, thank you, Dudley. And that will be, for those folks that don't have a computer, they can watch it that way.
Perfect, okay, cool. So I'm going to pass the gavel?
I don't want anybody to have. For the hospital meeting?
For the hospital, yes.
I will. I'll wait for Ben to catch up. Call the meeting to order, but could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
And Chairman Olson?
Here.
Any announcements?
None.
Oh, cool. Any written communications?
None.
Any presentations?
None.
Any oral communications from the audience? Flocking to the podium, sit down. Consent calendar.
Yes, there are three items on the consent calendar, items approved by the hospital board of trustees from the March 18th meeting, actions from the July 15th meeting, and the CEOs' report and CFOs' report that were tabled, I believe, from the last hospital board meeting.
Pleasure of the board?
Sorry.
Any item from the consent want to be removed? Any comment from the audience? Entertained motion?
Since she pulled in to review them more thoroughly, we'll just give it back to her.
Thank you, council, or board of trustees, for allowing me to do that. I feel much more educated and feel as though I can make a much better decision in a motion to approve.
All a second?
Discussion, public, call for the question.
All ayes.
General business?
There is none this evening.
I have no report. Members' report? We will adjourn. We're done, back to you.
And the last, I don't want me to, is a closed-session item?
Yes, one closed-session item, public employee dismissal, disciplined dismissal, release.
See y'all in a little bit.
City manager report that was omitted.
Wait, you said you had nothing to report.
Oh, I didn't have.
It wasn't omitted.
That's why I was ribbing you, I was ribbing you. You didn't, I was waiting for some response.
Okay, everyone, we're back from closed session. City attorney?
No report of action.
Okay, so, council, I'm going to take advantage of my city manager report that wasn't on the agenda. We have a few things. First and foremost, I screwed up, I will not be at the meeting on the 19th of August. I was doing one of those late nights trying to book plane flights, and I was trying to go for Wednesday morning, then I just went in this delirium, and I couldn't find a flight that I wanted, so I suddenly found one Tuesday night, and I couldn't realize why I hadn't looked at Tuesday night earlier, booked it, and then about an hour later, I realized, oh, that's why I don't do Tuesday nights. Anyway, so Denise will be here, she will lead the meeting, of course, capably, and I just want to make you aware of that.
Are we still doing the goals?
Okay, so next, Denise has come up with several dates I need to quickly run by you of important things.
Which I'll email you also.
August 12th, which is next week. Are you not here August 12th, Mayor?
No, I'm not.
You're not here, okay, scratch that.
Are days next week you're available?
Are you gone all next week?
What's the 10th?
10th, Sunday.
I'll be here. The 11th, and only in the morning though. I have to go over on the night of the 11th, and 12th and 13th, I'm gone.
But I've got to get my teeth cleaned by my son-in-law who's working in Ben's office now.
Really?
Yeah.
So am I hearing that there's not opportunity on the 11th, or there's not?
Morning, oh, you're going morning?
I'm going Monday, yes.
On Monday, the 18th.
Monday, the 18th?
Looks good to me.
Afternoon for me.
Afternoon of the 18th, Monday?
4:30. I could do that.
Whenever, whatever's.
4:30, the 18th?
Would that be a replacement council meeting, or is that a goals meeting?
This would be a goals meeting, so try to get you guys finished with that part of the process. I know everybody loves going.
I thought we were going to adopt the goals at a council meeting that we adopted, the five that we put forth, we were going to adopt them.
We could do that, we could bring back, the next council meeting, well, let's see, is it going to be before then? No, it won't be. Right, no, because the next council meeting is on the 19th.
We don't have goal setting on the 19th?
Well, that's what I screwed up, because I booked a, yeah, booked a flight on that.
I understand.
So, we could, well, I guess it doesn't matter, we could finish them all, hopefully we'll get a lot done on the 18th, and then adopt them the following night, we could adopt them that night.
But don't they have to be published?
Well, it's a public meeting, and so you guys, you guys could do it in that meeting on the 18th. Would that be the pleasure, just get them adopted where we are so far?
Well, I thought we were going to adopt the five that we talked about at the last goal meeting, each of them.
There was a eight.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Somebody cheated.
Turned a eight.
Somebody cheated.
And really, that's not enough.
No, that's not, that, but we have hashed out eight of them, five of them, five to eight of them.
So let's proceed.
Let's proceed with those, get those as goals for the council, and then let's adopt additional goals at the meeting of the 18th, then we can move those into the meeting in September to adopt them.
Okay, so at the start of that meeting on the 18th, assuming that works, we could first thing adopt the goals that we.
The 19th.
The 19th.
The regular council meeting.
Okay, okay. Do we, all right, and then the additional goal setting?
From the 18th, we'll adopt in a meeting in September.
Okay, so what you're saying, just to beat this to death, for the 19th agenda, we're going to adopt those goals we already agreed on.
Yes.
The day prior, we're going to work on new goals, which will then be adopted in September.
Yes.
Okay, does that suit the council?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Holy cow. Yes.
Denise is going to keep this one straight for us, so, all right, moving on, council, there is, on the 19th, there is the League presentation where the League is actually sending over the mayor from the hill, the peninsula area, whatever we're calling that area, Rancho Palos Verdes, to do the council member training. That's on the 19th, we're proposing 4:30 before the council meeting, is that acceptable to you guys?
Yeah.
Works for everybody?
I'm not going to go there.
Okay, now, Annie, you're not?
Council training?
Are you going to be there?
We're good.
Okay, that's a week prior, sorry.
Yeah.
Never mind. Okay, August 26th, we're proposing a water study session at 6:00 p.m.
That's an inlay of September 2nd, because you're all leaving for the League conference.
I got it for September 2nd, we're changing that?
Because you're going to be over town, Joe, for the conference?
September 2nd, we have you guys checking into your accommodations for the conference that starts the next morning.
League of Cities?
Yeah.
Throwing you a curve.
The 26th?
August 26th.
Yes.
Joe Burns?
No, water. For the water study, that would probably be good.
Joe Burns, who is a partner in my office, and is also the president of the California Water Commission, and has been the guy that's been making the phone calls to all the agencies.
He's going to be doling out the water bond proceeds.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, that.
So he will be here on the 26th.
I bet you got one having a study session.
I will be leaving at 6:00 AM the next morning to Ann Arbor to drop my son off to college.
So Joe will be here in lieu of, in lieu of you, right?
Yeah, we would do the water study at 6:00 PM, though, because of the normal time at night where people can pay attention.
Yeah, Joe Burns.
Okay, Burns.
When are we going to talk about our water study?
All things water. We're going to talk about specifically the city's direction to pursue this community service district, what's involved, and then, but then also things we can do now. Just want to kind of lay it out. Essentially, we need a strategy.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because we're all going to meet and talk in a different areas.
26th.
Right, and I want to, I want to report to you as to work I've been doing, the city attorney's office has been doing, so you know, you have everything. Okay.
And that will be properly, yeah, there'll be a lot of people wanting to do that.
Oh, yeah.
So 6:00 PM on the 26th?
That's the concept, yeah.
So that's instead of September 2nd?
Does your additional pay for that?
No.
No.
And we're, and then we're not having a meeting on Tuesday this week.
That's right.
So we will only have one council meeting officially in September.
And that's going to be the joint planning commission and city council meeting, all about CUPs.
What?
Lucky you.
That's a perfect...
What?
That's on the second meeting in September, which is the 16th.
I'd love to be here.
To be discussed.
And there's no items that are going to need to be discussed when we have this meeting on the, with the joint meeting or any of that? Everything's just on hold?
We usually do the joint planning council at the beginning, and then commissioners exit, and the council continues on with whatever they have.
It'll be one long...
Cindy, typically, yes, it's what we do, but you figure if we're updating the three new council on all CUPs, now I know that you know it, we figured that was going to be a good two hours or so. I was hoping to keep, if we did a regular council meeting, consent stuff are extremely light, general.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Like adopting the goals that you're going to set.
So we will bring these dates back to you again, just so you can have them and plug them into your calendar, but we just wanted to make sure that doesn't work. Denise will send you an email, so look for an email from Denise, and she'll, and I will keep the email to keep us all straight on this stuff.
And Denise, thank you for getting, I know it was a lot of work for both of you, but getting, and everybody getting the agendas out on, by Wednesday.
You're welcome.
Kudos to Denise. That was all Denise.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Very nice. Sorry, I forgot. Go ahead.
You're mad at me.
Yes, and we'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Ray Grant, John Marin, and Kenny Beach.
And Kenny Beach.
Amen.